All right. Ed Dennis will not be here tonight. He has to work late, so he's excused. It is 7:00 PM and we're going to start our meeting on time. We've asked Mike Martin to give the opening prayer and then David Martin will follow with the Pledge of Allegiance. Yep, just right up there. Right up here and the mic is on. Just stand at the podium and, no, no, facing the council, sorry.
Okay, all right.
It's just the way it works. Sorry, it's not the other way around.
Have to have your back to the audience.
Yes.
They have your back.
I appreciate that, thank you. Our dear heavenly Father, we're grateful for this opportunity to meet one with another in this great nation and in the city of Highland for the city council meeting. We're grateful for the freedoms which we enjoy that allow us to do so, to exercise the privilege of self-government and to be involved in our government. We're grateful for the freedoms which we enjoy and we pray for thy Spirit to be with us, that all who are here this evening may have clarity of thought and words and hearing. May that wisdom may prevail in the decisions that are made and those things that are discussed, that all may treat one another with civility and kindness, represent well those who have sacrificed to give us this privilege. And as we pray in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
The audience, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, David. We appreciate that. The youth presentation that's on, our youth council presentation that's on the agenda will not happen tonight, and so we'll proceed with Mr. Walker from, you're right, I'm sorry, I skipped those. So, at the front of the meeting, we allow people to talk about any issue that they want to for three minutes. You're welcome to come up and voice your concerns or lavish praise on the council. We don't mind that. Or not.
Has that ever happened? Lavished praise?
I'm trying to encourage a new behavior.
I think it's awesome. I'm all for it.
At least we have a sense of humor, at least.
Some of us more than others, right?
Yeah, that's true.
Or less than others.
If you would like to, go ahead, come out on the podium. You have to state your name and then, you got three minutes.
This is probably redundant, but I've never been to a council meeting here before and just in the interest of some of these scouts to show how it's done, I assume to state my name. My name is Mike Martin. I'm a resident of Alpine, but I'm interested in perhaps an update to the connector. Is it called the Murdock Connector along the canal trail there? I'm sure it's been discussed much here, it's just that I haven't heard it, so as a matter of practice, maybe I can offer that.
Happy to share. It's really quick. It's currently under design. UDOT is being, we've contracted with UDOT to design it. We have some land purchases to make to facilitate that. Once those are arranged, we expect, best case, we'll start moving dirt this fall and then the paving will be completed sometime next year. Best case would be May-June, but it's happening, so that's a good thing. So, good question. If you have other comments related to items later on in the agenda, feel free to, I will provide time for those during that specific agenda item. Any other comments or noncomments? All right, we'll move on to presentations. Josh, sorry to get ahead and get you all excited and not deflate you, but you're on now.
Thank you, Mayor, for having me today. So, my name is Josh Walker. I am the President of the American Fork Chamber of Commerce and we've been talking with Mayor Mann over the course of the last year or so. In fact, this idea originated a few years ago when I had meetings with Erin, to form the Lone Peak Business Alliance. And so, took a while to get all the pieces in place, but we have now officially formed the Lone Peak Business Alliance, which serves the businesses in Highland, Alpine and Cedar Hills. And so, we're coming to the city now to let you know about this business alliance, but also that we would love to have the city come on as a partner with the chamber. So, the business alliance operates as its own entity, as the chamber doing business as the Lone Peak Business Alliance. And we're going to have a separate committee that will run the business alliance with its own functions and we're going to be kicking everything off actually in a couple weeks. And so, what I did is I kind of put together a proposal. I emailed it to you and then I gave you all a copy. It's called "American Fork Chamber of Commerce Lone Peak Business Alliance Proposal." And the idea behind it is that we can serve some needs that the city may have in terms of economic development, in terms of being able to interact with the businesses that you may not have on staff right now. So, there are some cities out there that have an economic development person. That's their job is to help with those roles. And as we've come to learn, not all cities can afford a full-time staff person that handles economic development. And so, we have been interacting with American Fork. In fact, last week, we just signed a contract with American Fork that we are handling economic development projects for them, which specify certain things that we do with the business community, to help streamline the process of getting your business, going from getting your business license to opening your doors. And then, we step in at that end and we come in and do ribbon cutting and engage those businesses with the community, with the residents and with each other, so that they can feel welcome. And the idea is that we want businesses that open their doors in your city to keep their doors open and to stay, and also to help drive business. So, we put in a strategic plan that talks about what we're going to be doing. We have created marketing materials. We've already been recruiting businesses, so on May 2nd, we will have our official launch of the Lone Peak Business Alliance. We already have one of our members of the Lone Peak Business Alliance, the Charleston and Cedar Hills, has offered their location for this launch. The idea is that we're going to rotate on a quarterly basis, a breakfast. That will be a networking and educational breakfast for the businesses. But this initial launch is going to be for all businesses. It's going to be a free thing and we're going to invite every business, home-based, brick and mortar, you name it, to come to this to learn about the business alliance and what we can do as a chamber to help businesses connect with each other, to help them connect with the cities and to help them connect with the residents.
Josh, with that.
Yeah.
When you say the Lone Peak Business Alliance, are you including American Fork businesses with that, or is that just Cedar Hills, Highland and Alpine?
So, American Fork Chamber members are invited to come interact, but these events are specifically for the businesses of Highland, Alpine, Cedar Hills. Now, it's a dual membership, so I did give you a flyer that talks about the membership of being a member of the Lone Peak Business Alliance. So, when you sign up as a member of the business alliance, you're automatically a member of the American Fork Chamber as well. And so, you have access to all of the events that we do. So, on a monthly basis, we have a speaker come in. And we've been inviting the mayor to come and kind of experience those luncheons over the last several months and we had a good turnout. We had Goldman Sachs come and speak at our last luncheon and they have a program that's free for businesses to help them go from where they're at to the next two, three levels. And they have grant programs involved where all you have to do is apply and go through the system and suddenly you're getting some funding from Goldman Sachs. So, there are a lot of tools out there for businesses, especially home-based businesses struggle, I think, a lot with knowing how to market themselves, knowing how to go from, how do I go from a home base to that next step where I want to open my own office? And so, we have a lot of tools and resources to help educate them on that process. Yes, that's a good question. Anything else on that particular?
Well, I mean, it sounds like the Lone Peak Business Alliance is going to meet on their own for the luncheons, not with the, I mean, it sounds like they can go to AF, but you're going to have an own separate meeting just for the Lone Peak Business Alliance.
Correct. And it'll be a breakfast. And the reason why we went with breakfast is really because of the home-based business. A lot of those businesses will, are doing their business during, you know, during the work hours, so we're trying to find a time that will work that will be most beneficial. Plus, we wanted to have, you know, we already have a luncheon. We do a networking luncheon with all of the chambers in North Utah County, a networking luncheon, and so we wanted to have another opportunity for a different timeframe. So, yeah, thank you for that question. And like I said, it is a membership, a full membership, so you are a member of the Lone Peak Business Alliance, you're also a member of the American Fork Chamber. One of the things that we do is, especially for the smaller businesses, we create a landing page about a company on the chamber website. So, American Fork Chamber's been around since 1946 and we are considered a highly trusted source of information to Google. So, if we have a lot of information about a business on our website, then that helps them with their search engine optimization. We have several examples of small businesses that have signed up with the chamber and went from nonexistent on the web to suddenly, and the landing page isn't to replace their website, it's to enhance their ability to find them on the web. And even businesses that don't have a web presence, Mayor Frost is a perfect example. And American Fork, he has a landscaping company, had no web presence, and so we were able to create that landing page and actually get him a web presence. And so, now he gets more calls than he may want. But, so those are some of the things that we do with this business alliance. Now, what we're proposing from the city is on this page, it's called "City Partner." And so, we have all kinds of benefits and specific things that we do for businesses, but we also have strategic partnerships with the city. So, American Fork City, we have a great partnership with them, with the chamber. You know, as we were doing research on the history, the chamber was formed specifically to help with economic development in American Fork back in the 40s. And we've come full circle now that the chamber is being utilized again to help with economic development. But some of the things that we are doing in American Fork that we would like to make specific for the Lone Peak Business Alliance is a mayor's council, where we can bring businesses in to meet with the mayors of the different cities and talk about kind of the high-level issues that the businesses are facing, the cities facing, and how do we work together to address those issues and plan for the future. We also do a state-of-the-city luncheon right now with American Fork, and so we would hold a state-of-the-cities luncheon for the Lone Peak Business Alliance, typically in January to kick off the year, where we would give each mayor a chance to talk about, you know, this is what happened in the prior year, this is our plans for the next year, and being able to engage the business community on that level. I already talked about the quarterly networking and educational breakfast that we'll be doing. And so, the kickoff will be in May and then we'll have the next one approximately three months later, and we'll have one every three months as a networking breakfast. Then also, we have an annual awards, an installation luncheon. So, we will be doing a monthly Business of the Month for Lone Peak Business Alliance, so it has to be a business in either Cedar Hills, Highland or Alpine. It's voted on by the members of the business alliance and chamber, and then we'll come and do a presentation. At the end of the year, those 12 businesses will have a chance to be voted on to be the Business of the Year. And so, we already do a Business of the Year for the American Fork Chamber, but this will be a specific Business of the Year for Lone Peak Business Alliance. And then, one of the things that we would add is a mayor's award for each participating city. So, again, we do this in American Fork where Mayor Frost chooses a business. It doesn't have to be a member of the chamber, it just has to be someone that he, a business he feels has contributed significantly in some way to the community. And so, Mayor Mann, you would be able to consult with the council and be able to make that decision on who you'd like to give a mayor's award to. That luncheon is done in February. A couple of other things, the city celebration promotion, I have a little bit extra experience with. You know, I've run a company for several years, helping cities actually with their city celebrations. Erin and I worked together for a few years as we built up the Highland Fling and getting sponsors, and I think that helped the city get to a point where they could hire Julie to come in and take over and bring the Highland Fling even, make it even better. But some of the things that we can do is we can help some of these cities that would like to engage with Highland, that maybe Julie doesn't have time or she doesn't know who to talk to. So, we can be a resource to the city on that end.
You can help with fundraising is basically what?
I am kind of an expert in that. In fact, American Fork contracts with the chamber, we run all of Steel Days. And so, it's, all of the expenses are, you know, the city puts a little bit of money and they put in some police and fire, but really it's on the chamber to make or break the city celebration. We started that last year. This is our second year where the chamber's in charge of the entire city celebration. And it's quite the daunting thing to do, but we-
What type of budget? You talked, when you were saying with AF, how much have you been able to raise and what are they spending on their celebration?
So, American Fork put in about $35,000. We raised, just from sponsors alone, almost $90,000. And then, from all the other revenue, I think it was a total of about $190,000 in revenue and $170,000 in expenses. So, yeah, we do that. Some of the other things we do, political debates. So, we are, we've been hosting them for years in American Fork. And so, the chamber comes in as an unbiased, neutral party and we invite all the candidates that are running that particular year to come in and we have a moderator. We ask the public to come in and ask their questions and we give everybody a chance to present. And if there's a primary, we do a debate during the primary and then we'll do another debate before the election. So, that's something that we have a lot of experience in doing as well. And then, we've listed some of the other benefits specifically for the city there, but a lot of that just has to do with, it's really more of a, as we sit down and talk about what the city needs and what can the chamber, what can the business alliance do to help? So, it's a living document, to say. You know, we've already set an appointment for Mayor Mann to meet with Advisors Consulting Services. They're the economic development group for the county. And their job has been, as tasked by the county, is to find out what are the needs of each city and the goals and desires of each city for economic development. And so, we're working closely with them and closely with the cities to help make sure that we can provide a boost wherever that's needed in economic development. So, do you have any questions on what I've said so far? No? Okay, good. Well, I did ask a couple of our members to come up. Scott Walker, he is the HR Director for American Fork Hospital and he's a Highland resident and he sits on our Board of Directors. And so, I just asked him if he wouldn't mind coming and talking a little bit about what the chamber has done and he's actually helped us, we've signed up several Highland businesses as part of the Lone Peak Business Alliance from his referrals.
No, I think you've had two, when I looked on your website, two, I think Fix It and then I think you've had Tina Chadwick with the Flower. Is there been more than the two that have signed up so far?
There are. We're up to, I think, seven or eight now. In fact, we just signed up Elevate, Elite, and the dentist office is coming in here. They're moving from Alpine to Cedar Hills and they, or to Highland. And, yeah, they want us to come to a ribbon cutting forum here, so. Scott.
Good evening, council. Honored to present to you tonight. My name is Scott Walker. I'm a resident of Highland. And as Josh introduced me, I do, my employment is with the American Fork Hospital. We've been a member for a long time there and I have the opportunity, as directed by your hospital administrator, to serve on the Board of Directors for the chamber. I want to go way back, though, before I started doing that to, I'm about, I think, a fifth generation in this valley. And my grandfather was a farmer, my father was a farmer, and then started his own company. Even as a little child, he owned a construction company, started it right after World War II and the shop and the office for the shop was in our backyard. I remember walking up there as a child and up in the window, there was a little sticker that said "Chamber of Commerce." I had no idea what that was. I just thought it was a really cool sticker, you know, and I wondered what that means. So, now, many years later, I've come to really appreciate the chamber and what it does and how it can really help support the Lone Peak, the business alliance that you've created I work for a large employer here in the valley. The chamber is made up of large employers, medium-sized employers and small employers. There's certainly benefits for all of us and we benefit by being a member of the Chamber of Commerce. What I really love about it, though, it has reminded me of an opportunity to give back. And I try, I enjoy serving on the chamber and everything that I see that happens with the chamber and with the business alliance and uniting these communities and the businesses within those communities, it inspires me to make sure that we're always fulfilling our role to give back to the community. So, really appreciate that opportunity and I think that you would appreciate that opportunity and the benefit that comes from that. You don't really need a chamber and alliance to grow business. Businesses are moving in and people are moving in and business is happening, but the organization and the education and the service that comes from the connection with the chamber and the business alliance, I think will really benefit our area. And I'd be happy to help serve with that, especially being a resident of Highland. Appreciate your time. I'll give it back to you, Josh. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. I'll just be really hopeful that if we do this, that some of your $90,000 worth of contributors to AF would see some benefit from sending some sponsorship our way.
Oh, I have no doubt. I'm pretty sure that there are several that are still sponsoring today that I originally signed up years ago.
I think what you're referring to, you used to help us with the little Highland Fling booklet that would go out and as a city, I think we took it over last year. So, you were the one that kind of helped get that going, helped fundraise some of the expenses for Highland at that time, right?
Correct. So, yeah. Basically, when Erin was brought into the city, she knew I was doing that for Lehigh Roundup and she said, "Hey, can you do this for Highland?" And I said, "Sure, why not?" And so, that's how that came about. So, yeah, and by the way, the X-factor in what we bring is, Christina's not here, Christina Weisman, she's our Vice President of the Chamber. We are two full-time employees, you know, staff of the chamber and our full focus is to make sure that we can help the businesses be successful. And part of that is creating a good, positive relationship with the city. And so, if you were to reach out to city council or mayor or David Bunker, anyone over there at American Fork, I think that you'll hear good things. You know, even Tim keeps hearing all of our presentations that we make to city council. And so, yeah, I think that that is just a benefit that you get is we're dedicated to make sure that these are successful endeavors.
Okay. Any questions from council? All right, thank you, Josh. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. All right. Next is consent items. We have three items on the consent calendar. Approval of our last year's minutes, Olmstead, power loss carriage agreements, and then Utah County Elections Contract. Council?
I move that we approve the consent items, A, B and C as presented.
I second that.
Moved and seconded. Ready for vote? For those of you that are here for the first time, this last year, we started doing electronic voting and we've worked out most of the bugs. Except Brian.
Except I wasn't prepared for it.
And Brian is our resident techie, so when the rest of the council beats Brian, that's a good thing. That means it's really working.
You're just going to have to take my verbal on this one until I get it going.
So-
Very. I, yes. What's your vote, Brian?
Yes.
So, Mayor, that's 4-0.
4-0, thank you. The nice thing about this system is then at the end of every council meeting, we have all the votes recorded in a system that we can share publicly really easily. And it keeps me from manipulating the vote by doing a roll call and picking one council over another. Yes.
I just wanted to thank Todd for all the information he gave us on the Central Utah project and that consent item. It was very interesting.
Yeah, it put me to sleep really well. It was awesome.
Moving right along. Todd, we have an action item on the 2019 road construction project contracts.
Mayor, council, appreciate it. Just a little bit of history here on our 2019 road project, so I just wanted to make sure that we continue to show that this is our seven-year plan. That's the map, trying to get to every road in the city with some sort of treatment. This year, we've kind of broken it into, if you remember, last year, we had three different projects. This year, our surface patching is minimal, so I just lumped that in with the preservation. So, we'll be bringing two major projects to the council this year. The rehabilitation, which we'll go over today, and then in the upcoming weeks, we'll have a preservation project that we'll bring back to the council. So, with that being said, here's our map for 2019. I broke it out just so you could see the projects for 2019. There on your left is all of the projects that we currently show being done this year, and I don't know if you can see that, but it was in your packet. And then, there on the right is the actual exhibit from our plan set, and I included the plan set in your packet as well. So, here are the rehabilitation roads. This is basically everything for the million dollars that we're supposed to spend every year. But this year, we as staff have had quite the time trying to decide what to do, what not to do, how to do it. We've been back and forth on several items, including projects, upcoming projects, and let me show you a few issues that we ran into. First of all, all of those segments right there are 9600 North. 9600 North was supposed to be our big, big project this year, as well as finishing off 6000 West and 6400 West. But 9600 North is slated to have a major sewer project based on the Utah State Developmental Center property. So, we need to upgrade the sewer through a good majority of that road and it makes no sense to go in and do work and then tear it up in a year or two later. So, that was one issue that we ran into this year, as well as the Utah State Development Project is going to be doing some work on Cedar Hills Boulevard. That's the road just below Lone Peak High School. So, we felt like it was money not well-spent to go in and do some preservation work there and then have it torn up as well. So, those are five of the road segments that we were planning on doing this year. So, with that being said, we've pulled those out and now let me show you what our bid was and the direction that we think that we should go as a city. So, we put together a plan set for the remaining roads. They're shown there in the map. And then, we put it out to bid and we had our bid opening last, it would be a week ago yesterday. And we had five contractors bid on the project. They're there at the top on the left-hand side. And the first project that was bid was the 6000 West. It was part of our base bid and you can see there, it's just finishing off that south portion all the way down to 9600 North. And that came in at $264,000. Then, this is kind of the piece that I wanted to talk a little bit more extensively about. 6400 West, in our original plan, had a surface treatment only. In doing some geotechnical work leading up to our project, we found that the subsurface in that area was really bad. And so, felt like we need to do more. And if you drive the road, it's in a condition where we need to do more than just a surface treatment. So, we had to make some changes as staff to do a better treatment there and make the road nicer. The problem is, is once, if we do alternative bid one, you can see that it was $489,000 just for that piece. Our budget every year is a million dollars. So, with that being said, we ran into that issue and unknowing, we were stuck between a rock and a hard spot. What we should do is completely rebuild that road from an engineering standpoint. What we should do as a financial, financially, as far as the city is concerned, trying to stay with the plan, we should do something different with that road. And so, I gave two alternatives here. Alternative one would be completely excavate the whole road down 24 inches and rebuild the road. And as you can see, it's pretty expensive. The other option is to do the $200,000 and actually do a mill and overlay. That's similar to what we did on 6000 West north of SR 92. Mill it down, do an overlay. We as staff, in walking and looking at the road, it's a fairly old road- We as staff, in walking and looking at the road, it's a fairly old road, felt that the consolidation, the bad materials beneath the road have consolidated over the years and feel like a mill and overlay would, would be okay. It's not the ideal situation, but it would keep us on track with the other roads in the city. If we go ahead with alternative one, you can see, by, by the time we do the whole project, we're almost a million dollars. And then what about 9,600 North? We're trying to save some money for that project after we get the sewer project done. And if we, and if we do this alternative, we have no money there. So we're just losing, slowly falling behind in our road projects. So la- last thing, we did, similar to what we did last year, we did some additive bidding just to make sure that we were under the million dollars and we knew where to stop. And with all, all of these roads combined together with alternative one, you can see there the total cost would be $867,000. So last year, the contract that we awarded to Geneva to do all of those roads was 826,000. So we're, we're right there in the ballpark of staying there and having a little bit of contingency money in case we run into problems along the way. So, and I really would like to save as much money as we can for 9,600 North. So as you can see, I, I included two options here. Well, three options. Option one would be, in my opinion, probably the best use of the money. We as staff have sat down and gone through this extensively and feel like alternative two of doing a mill and overlay, although it might not be the, the ideal situation, it's probably what we should do financially is the 600,000. So just under 600,000. That way we have 400,000 to put towards 9,600 North.
So Todd, just before he continues, the, the alternative two is putting additional asphalt on top of the road and, and making it a stronger road. And your assumption is that the, any bad material underneath has already gone through its consolidation and it's not gonna collapse on you anymore. And so the life of the road could be 10 or more years with the treatment.
Right. The current asphalt out there in places is 20 years old. And yes, we have some consolidation in where the trenches were. The material is really bad material if you disturb it. But where it's not disturbed, it's okay because the, the road section will actually bridge it. But if you go out there and drive, like Stevens Lane is in that area and has the same materials, you can see where our utility trenches are. Cause over the years, that material has consolidated and created those low points. This road, I think, we're, we're taking a gamble, but I feel like it's the best use of the money. If we decide to rebuild the whole thing, it's $273,000 more to do that, to excavate it down. And then we're going 24 inches down and then we're into PI pipes. So our pressurized irrigation pipes are about 24 inches to 30 inches down. We will be into laterals. There, there's a, there's many more unknowns if we decide to do alternative one. And that's the reason we as staff, it's, it's taken some time to come to this conclusion, but that would be our recommendation. We still will do alternative one if the city council feels that it's appropriate.
So Todd, a question. Let's assume we do the mill and overlay. You put a two inch and you go out to your cap. Are we gonna disturb anything with the pressurized irrigation at that, where they're down two inches? Is there any concern there?
No. No. So we won't even go beneath the bottom of the asphalt area. If there's a, if there's a location where we need patching or something, the way the mill and overlays work is we will actually edge mill, meaning that we'll mill down. If you notice throughout Highland City, there's many places where we've done overlays over the years and you have that little lip. People will go through their driveway and it drops about two inches. We don't do that now. We mill down so that the asphalt meets the lip of the curb really well, but we only do that on the edges. And so we actually end up getting two extra inches of asphalt and we will run a, it's called a leveling course over and level the road first before we put that two inches.
So now let's go down seven years down the road. We, could we do another mill and overlay in seven, so in seven years, are you saying it's gonna be a sil coat? And Slurry, are you saying we're gonna do a mill and overlay so now we've raised that road up even higher or?
No. Seven years from now, we would, we would do some sort of a more robust surface treatment, a micro-surface or even, we're, we're, we're doing some research right now and trying a few different things. There's, I know chip seal is not a good word, but there's products out there now that they actually will do a smaller chip seal and then come back with what, what, what they call a fog coat. So it looks like a brand-new black asphalt surface, but they have just a little bit of an aggregate increase. Does that make sense? So you're not doing the full two-inch overlay. If we were to be required to do another overlay, we would mill off the two inches and put it right back. That's how we'd have to do that. But that would be 20 years from now.
So if you rebuilt the road totally, which is the most expensive option, how many years would that road last?
So it's, it's technically a 20-year lifespan is what our, our local roads are designed to. Now, when you get to a UDOT road, they're going, you know, five, seven, eight inches thick of asphalt. They're, they're projecting their lifespan further than we do. But right now, with the million dollars that we're spending, we just can't afford to do that and it's not our standard anyway. Our standard collector thickness is four inches.
And so with this other alternative, which is less expensive, you're assuming it's good for seven to 10 years? Is that what you're telling us? I'm not quite sure.
No, I'm assuming that we'll get 10, 20 years out of the life of the road. That's what I'm assuming. We will have to do a few surface treatments.
With a cheaper alternative.
Right. Now, it's a gamble, like I said, but in looking at it, Ty and myself have walked the road a number of times already. And it just, it, it's in fairly good condition, other than the few asphalt trenches that we have. And, and we feel like over the years, those have consolidated now, that once we fill those in and, and patch them, we should have a good road.
And the current road is how old now? You told us.
Some places, some places it's based on the development. And so there are developments through there that they went in and did the widening, but the old road itself, I'm guessing, Ty and I have not been here for the life of that road. And so we're guessing 20 years.
20 plus.
20 plus. I mean, how, how, how old is Stevens Lane?
It's 25 years old.
Okay. Then that road surface is actually older than that, so.
So going back to what Councilman Smith talked about, so let's assume you say it's a 20-year road. So here in seven years, we do this mill and overlay and seven years we're gonna do a sil coat. And we'd assume another seven years we'll do another sil coat. But what Councilman Smith talked about was in 20 years, but you're really not looking, even if we did a 20, you know, we put, we build it, are you thinking in seven years we're still gonna have to do that sil coat? I mean, it's not gonna go 20 years. We're gonna have to service it within that 20 years.
So, so if you remember, our seven-year plan is to put a surface treatment on every road within seven years. That's technically what we try to do. We put more robust surface treatments on our collector and arterial roads. The, the local roads is more of just what we call a high-density mineral bond. It's, it's like a raincoat. And that's what, a lot of the residents on your local roads, that's what you're seeing. But I anticipate with 6, 6,400 West, we do another sil coat seven years from now, maybe another one. And then 20, 21 years from now, we're doing another mill and overlay. That is my hope. And that, and that's the best-case scenario.
Have you done any core samples in this?
Yes. And that's why we, this came up.
That's why you feel comfortable with doing it?
Well, that's why I feel uncomfortable coming with.
That's why you feel uncomfortable?
Yes.
Wait, that didn't, that didn't help my confidence.
I know. Trust me, it's been six months of this going through my head. We did core samples because if you remember last year on 6, 6,000, we had some unknowns that came up. And in the bidding process, if you don't know those unknowns, when you come back, sometimes the prices can, can really hurt you. So we actually did core samples, 28 of them on these roads that were set to be reconstructed. And that's why this came up. Cause we would be talking about a surface treatment that definitely wouldn't be the right, the right treatment on this road. So the, the core sample came back and said the subbase was in really bad shape and needed to be completely removed. But they said go down 30 inches, but it's impossible for us. Our pressurized irrigation line is 24 inches deep. So it's just impossible for us to do that. So we looked at other ways to put the geofabric down. So we've bid it that way in alternative one as completely removing 24 inches, putting down a geofabric and bringing that back up. 12 inches of subbase, eight inches of base and four inches of asphalt. But then we open up the road and then what utility problems do we run into? What other collapsible soils or the, you know, these, these bad materials do we have to overexcavate? It just, there's a lot of unknowns and I feel like it's, it's the better use of money to take the gamble and, and do this treatment and hope for 20 more years of life.
So if it, if it fails or portions of it fail, I mean, I don't see the whole road failing, but I see portions of it failing again, possibly failing again. If that happens, the cost of, of rebuilding those portions, how is that going to rate relative to redoing the whole road?
So Ty, our, our street superintendent, has the most experience on this road of, of anybody that we have here. So I relied on him quite extensively to walk it and look at what we've done so far. And we feel like over the 20 years, I mean, we, we've done patching. We went in and did some patching in Stevens Lane that has the same, same type of material. And I think right now it's doing well until we can get back in there and do a more extensive treatment on that too. So it's, it would be spot patching, so it would be fairly inexpensive to do. But 20 years from now, we may need to rebuild this again, you know? And, and if, if it doesn't work, if this mill and overlay does not work over the next 10, 15 years, we may need to spend the money and do it. But right now for this seven-year plan, I think we feel, we felt as staff, we owed it to the residents to try to stick with the plan as closely as we can and do what we can do with the money that we have.
This is a question I should have asked you beforehand, but I've been out of town until this morning. Tell me a little bit about Black Forest Paving. I've never heard of this company and what your experience has been, what their reputation and?
So I have never done any work with Black Forest Paving. And so when they, when they got the apparent low bid, we did a little bit of research. I've talked to their owner. It's a new company. They started in 2016. They sent me bios and I would be happy to send those to the council. The, the lead personnel at Black Forest Paving have extensive experience in the industry. They sent over some sample projects that they've done in the past several years. I didn't realize this, but there was a, a major developer in Highland City that they used Black Forest Paving to do all their paving. And I drove up there and it looks good, the subdivisions that they've done. So I feel, I feel comfortable with, with awarding the project to Black Forest.
That's subdivisions here in Highland?
Uh huh.
Can you name that subdivision?
It's Ivory. So the Ivory Development on the west side of Highland Boulevard. They did some.
Which is an older one.
What was that?
And that's an older project. It's been there for a while, hasn't it?
Some of the phases are older, but they recently did the last three phases. So I'm not sure if they did all of the paving in there, but they did some of it, is what I understand, so.
So Todd, they're gonna be putting a bond up, right? Will that bond be there for a year if we start to see problems? Maybe that comes back to what Councilman Smith's talking about with what our risk is with Black Forest.
We have a payment and a performance bond. And so once we give final approval, we release those. So, but we make sure that, you know, as you remember last year's project, by the time we finalized the project, it was probably four, five, six months after they had completed their work and we had done a final inspection. So we have those performance and payment bonds in place to protect the city from faulty work. And, and reading the bios of, of the company, these gentlemen have extensive service, extensive experience in the industry. So I'm not worried about that. It's just a matter of, you know, them getting in the door and, and doing the work and they've ensured me they want to start as soon as possible, but we're gonna hold them off to make sure that they're not doing the, the majority of the work during the school time. So we'd like most of it happen after June 1st.
And where are they located?
So they are located in West Jordan.
West Jordan.
I wanna say. Somewhere in South Salt Lake County.
Reasonably local.
Yeah.
As I was going through some of the bid pieces, you know, mobilization was like a tenth of what some of the others are, which is one of those costs that doesn't concern me in the quality of work because that's just moving their stuff around and whether they can make a profit or not.
The, the one that concerned me, if you look, their traffic control is much lower than anyone else's. And so I actually talked to him about that and he felt comfortable with his number and wanted to stick with it, so.
So one thing the council might not be aware of, but if the Dry Creek Lake starts and they start to excavate that dam down there, they're planning to use 6,400 West as kind of divert the Murdoch Trail bikes down 6,400 West. And so we have to be careful in our timing. If they've ripped down the, the dam and we've ripped up 6,400, we're gonna have bikers all over us calling saying what's going on. So is there a way to say, hey, you need to be done by a certain time? Cause I mean, that, 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 we gotta be careful on our timing there.
So we've given them the window. They can actually go into our next fiscal year. Like last year, we went June 1st to August 31st was our window. This year, we're starting a little bit earlier for that reason. We anticipate to be done before the, the Dry Creek Lake will start. They're still working through the final designs and, and they still need to go through the bidding. So we were hopeful that our contractor could start a little bit earlier before the end of school, just with some of the, you know, smaller curb gutter sidewalk, those types of things where we don't, you know, impact the school buses. But as, as you know, once, once we get in, we really get in and disrupt traffic, for those of you that traveled on 6,000 last year.
He smiles.
But it was fast. It was fast and efficient.
Any other questions for me?
You've done your homework. Thank you. It adds a lot of confidence knowing the due diligence. Glad you have had a few sleepless nights over this.
This was a tough one. I hope next year's easier.
So Council, you need discussion among yourselves or a motion would be okay too?
You know, here's a, here we pay our engineer to make tough decisions and he's proven to me that, that he's done his due diligence on this.
Okay. I do see one resident that wants to make a comment. So before we engage.
Hi, I'm Doug Courtney. Apologies, I didn't notice this until just now or would have asked somebody earlier. I noticed that on the chart with the bids, the Black Forest Paving base bid plus alternative two is 511,958.86 and the amount in the proposed motion is 594. Am I just missing something or is one of those?
Yeah, so the 594 is with the 82,000, the additive.
With the other project?
Yes. So the additive, we, we keep that at the end to see if we can fit it in. So the, so the 511,000 was just the base bid and then the additive, we added in just to do it, so it's 5870.
So the, that table just didn't have the alternative two plus additive on it?
Right. It just didn't have them broken out. So, so basically Doug, so that 867,000, the total, that included all of them. I just probably should have had another line item at the end that actually had alternative two plus the additive.
Perfect. So cool. Thank you.
Council?
So your proposal then is for the 867?
So my recommended one is there at the top, alternative two.
The 594.
594. Because that gives us, Brian, that gives us a little bit of money to put towards 9,600 North where we were slated to do it. We need to save some money for that.
So I'll move that we approve the contract with Black Forest Paving for the amount of We'll round it up.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing them, we're ready for a vote. Okay. That was fast. And that passes unanimously. Awesome. Thank you, Todd. Next item, Lone Peak Public Safety District in the Local Agreement Amendments. Is that gonna be you or is it Tim?
Yes, me. So one more.
Yes, me. So one more. I just have one. So, uh, as you know, Cedar Hills is, is leaving the District for Fire Service. And as such, we've begun looking at the, uh, Lone Peak Public Safety District, uh, should call it entity as Tim keeps reminding me. Uh, cause it's really not a local district as you think of a taxi district like, uh, like the, uh, Timp Sue or, or et cetera. Anyways, we've been looking at the agreement and looking at, uh, ways that, uh, to update that agreement to reflect their departure. Uh, as part of your packet, we, uh, provided, uh, the amended agreement and the, the original agreement. Basically, uh, the primary changes are as outlined, uh, the board structure. Right now, uh, the, for police, uh, since Alpine and Highland are the, uh, only entities involved with police, uh, the board is two, two, uh, two representatives from Alpine and two from Highland. Uh, with fire, uh, the, um, board structure is three, two and two, three from Highland, two from Alpine and two from Cedar Hills. Obviously, uh, Cedar Hills would not be involved anymore with that, their departure. Uh, so the proposed structure, uh, in meeting with Alpine, uh, their city administrator and their mayor is a two, two structure like we have with the, uh, uh, police. There's pros and cons to that. Uh, one of the questions I receive quite frequently is what happens if you can't agree? Well, nothing gets done. You have to agree. So, uh, so a little bit inefficient that way, but, uh, we've been able to make it work with, uh, police in the past. Uh, prior to Cedar Hills joining, uh, the board structure was two, two. In other words, how the, when the district was originally formed. Uh, district administration, uh, the change with that right now, uh, the executive director, which is basically a staff level position, uh, rotates between the city administrators from, um, Alpine and Highland on a yearly basis. Uh, we've in all of the research and the, uh, analysis and the, everything we've done over the last three or four years, uh, with that, it has been, uh, one of the findings with that is it's a little cumbersome, uh, cause it takes a while to get to know it. It takes, uh, and to have some consistency and changing every year can be problematic. So one of the things we're recommending is that the administration, uh, remains with Highland, us being the primary or the large majority of the, uh, financing for the district unless the board, uh, votes specifically, uh, otherwise. Uh, another minor change is defines the chiefs. We probably should add assistant chiefs there too, as that will employees is defined in Utah State Code. I think it was there before. We just wanted to clarify that. Uh, the, uh, defines that the board will approve the number of employees in the district. Uh, the funding mechanism, uh, for police and fire remain the same. Uh, as you know, police is, uh, purely, uh, population and it's assigned based on population. Uh, fire is assigned based on population, ERU and, and splitting some administrative cost. Um, one of the things that we did add that's new language is that if there's a budget increase that's over the average, average revenue increase of both cities, it requires formal action by these both city councils, uh, to approve that.
So can I just interject here? Cause this, I, I just, it was made clear to me today. With, with the current contract and with this one as well, once the board approves a budget, there is a contractual obligation between the, the cities and the interlocal. So we are bound, according to Tim, it would be in violation of agreement if we did not, uh, approve that.
That's correct. So one of the things that we were looking at was if you have a two, two board, uh, the, um, interlocal entity has to pass and adopt a budget just like any other. It's all, it, they have a fiscal year like we do. And so if you have a stalemate, you still have those state mandated deadlines for passing a budget. And there's really nothing in this agreement that addresses how to navigate when you, you don't agree because you have to agree on a budget. We have to adopt one every year.
Yeah. And that's, that's fairly easy to do. You just say it's the same as last year unless you agree to change. Or you have some stipulated amount of increase and that's, that's the mandate. But you know, it's, it's not that difficult. I mean, federal government could do it, but they choose not to. I think we can figure it out.
Certainly. Um, so when the, when the district passes the final budget, the city's obligated to do it. So if the governing board of the district adopts a budget that's an increase that the city doesn't have money to fund, it would require a tax increase, which is referable. So that also creates a little bit, that, that's worst case scenario, but it just puts a, a little bit of a, um, an issue there. When you have the funding authority, essentially the cities. So since we're down to two cities, before we had three. So you, when you have a lot of different moving parts, it's nice to have a s- single board that kind of governs things. But, um, but I think at this point, does the city have any desire to go to Alpine and kind of re-envision the district? Do we want to just kind of keep the status quo? That's what I think the council needs to decide tonight.
So it's not critical that we adopt this. We'd operate under the, uh, current agreement. Uh, but I do believe we need to start talking about it, uh, with Alpine.
So let me ask you, when you, the, the last item here says budget increase over the average revenue increase of both cities requires both council approvals. I mean, so what I understand Highland's paying two thirds of the expenses, Alpine's paying a third, but we're giving two and two. So, so in, in a sense Highland's given a preferential treatment to Alpine. I'm just speaking open, you know, that they're, because we're funding more of this budget, but yet we're allowing them to have the same equal vote. Would this help us? I mean, cause that's the other, let's assume we have two council members that are in favor of the budget increase and you have three that are not, but those two who are on the board, they could put, put us in a bind here where the other three council members in the city might not agree to that, where you have two and two. Is that a concern there, Tim, where that, that could come about?
Well, hypothetically, that could be the case. Um, but now I, I see that's mitigated with this language that, um, that Nathan inserted. The other thing to think about is senate versus house.
House.
Each state gets two representatives in the senate regardless of size. So pick your.
And then when there's a tie, they have the, the vice president make the, and so they have a tie breaking aspect. We don't have a tie breaking aspect. I'm just, I don't know if there's some language or something to.
So Brian, uh, you've been on the board a while. Why don't you describe your experience with police when it ties? And then I'll ask Chief Goleum to respond also.
There's two Bryans.
Well, I said Chief Goleum also, so that would mean Brian Braithwaite first.
You know, we've, we've done really well so far in working together. Um, I, I think our goals have been, uh, the same in moving forward. So it hasn't really been an issue. I think as long as there are, the concern that you brought forward Kurt is, is legitimate where if they passed a budget, they could obligate us in, but I think we can put stipulations in here that would mitigate that. Um, so that it wouldn't be, uh, it, it couldn't go beyond what we agreed to in advance. You know, some limit of a percentage. If it goes beyond that, then it has to be approved by both councils and that, that mitigates.
So Brian, if we have a percentage increase, we might have here in Highland where we don't have our building permit increase this year. So we don't have an increase, but Alpine could have building permit increase. I mean, so if we just say, okay, it's a 3% increase, we might not have it in our budget. Is that 3%? Cause we can't control what, you know, if we had a little recession, we could have ourselves tax go down. We might not have building. I mean, it just, it's hard if we put a percentage that's okay. I, I would assume the council people that are then from the two cities are gonna be also reasonable, but we gotta be careful on that too.
And that's, and my response is you do CPI, we have to have a, an index increase anyway at some point in time. You know, we anticipate, we're always anticipating that. So we'd have to calculate that in for insurance. We calculate it for everything that we do. So I don't see that as being significant, but I see it as something we do have to address. You know, to me, we've done really well together in the past. Uh, I haven't seen any major issues since I've been on the council, since I've been on the board.
And that's, and the police board has always been two, two, right? That's always functioned that way.
So I'd like to hear the arguments against, uh, three, two, uh, and, and doing it proportionally. Since we pay two thirds of the budget, we have two thirds of the population. I, I know Alpine doesn't like that. Is that the main reason?
Correct. The, uh, Alpine mayor and city administrator basically said, well, then we could just get ran over. So.
They could do what?
Just get ran over by Highland. And Highland could do whatever they want. We wouldn't have equal say, uh, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, mayor, would you like to jump in on that? You're in on that meeting?
Um, yeah, I've been in meetings with them. I, I, I can argue both sides of the, the coin on this one, but the, the one, you know, districts, a thing like this doesn't work out very long if it's not win-win. Um, and from what I've seen going backwards, uh, Highland and Alpine have been largely aligned. Uh, we have similar demographics. We have similar, uh, budget philosophies, uh, just are, are, we're very, very similar in, in nature. So, um, I, I don't see a problem with the, the two, two structure because, um, it, with two, two, you have to flip somebody on the other side to change. So if we're okay with things are now, um, I, I, I just don't see, I, I can't see that something bad in the future would happen that, that we couldn't prevent by just not, not going along with it. And I, 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 anyway, I, I just don't see problems. It's.
What if we, uh, had two board members from each city and then had a board chair that was one of the two mayors and rotate that every other year?
And they didn't have a vote unless there was a tie.
Right. And they would have no vote unless there was a tie.
And could rotate that back and forth. So neither city would feel.
But I, I have a concern if it's Alpine, cause they're only a third partner, their minority partner. I'm just, just, you know, you're looking, we can't have a, a concern. I mean, when you say that we're equal with Alpine, in fire, we're not. They have a wild land interface that we don't have. They have the, the mountainside that is a difference. So they might say, hey, we need a fire truck that can fight this wild land interface and we don't. And so, you know, then you got a two, two, then how do you, I'm just, I understand, I understand it's worked out good. We don't know who's on the council in the future. I, I'm just, right now I think we get along really well with Alpine. I, I would say everyone's there is good. We don't know who the new elected officials are in both cities. And so we don't know those personalities.
Yeah. I, you know, if we want the district to work, it would just, I know it's a big issue with them and it's, I, I, it's not one I would die personally on. I wouldn't follow my cert.
Well, it's, of course for them, it's a great thing. They're, they're a minority partner. They want to have the, they want the majority vote as a minority. I'm just, you know, as a business side, you would never give a minority person that put in a third of the money, the control or have that e- I guess you can do it as an equal. I understand that's how it's worked with the police. We never heard from, uh, Chief Williams about his input on, on this. I'd be interested in your input and how it's worked out over the many years you've been here.
So just, this is a, as a bit of history, there was a two, two disagreement back in budget year 2008, 2009. And the budget was not passed, uh, at, when, when the deadline met. Excuse me, I'm fighting a, a cold here. Um, so what we did is we took the two mayors and put them in jail until they could figure things out. And, uh, they came to an agreement quick. I, I'm kidding.
That's a good solution. That's actually not a bad solution.
Put it in the agreement.
I think one thing that would help resolve some of your concerns is when there, when there was that disagreement, it, it came down to a difference in between how much money was being spent and what was, what it was being spent for. Obviously that's what we're always talking about. But when push came to shove, the, the people came into a room and they worked out their differences, came to an agreement. There was a compromise made, uh, simply because they understand or, and I think you understand it's mutually beneficial for both cities to be involved in the district. Um, and I, I would foresee that in the future when you have calmer heads and, and educated individuals that understand that there has a benefit for combining services. Those things tend to work themselves out. Sometimes it may take a little bit longer than others, but that's been my experience in the past. Every year since then, um, it's always, we, there's never been an issue. I mean, there's been disagreements on how to spend money and what it should be spent on. But when, when push came to shove, uh, cooler heads prevailed. And I, I see that going forward in the future. That's just, both cities have common goals. Both cities have common interests. They, they want the same things for the most part. And I just see that, uh, moving forward. One suggestion I would make is that if you're looking for a tie breaker, I think that should go to the chief of police and he'll, he'll break the tie on the, whatever the, whatever it may be. So, I mean, you can consider that.
Is that as serious?
No.
So one, one thing that, one thing that did happen, I think it was 2011, is that we had a serious disagreement on the, um, the fireside. And it has caused problems. And we're more aligned with police than we are with fire. Kurt, from your statements, I mean, there is a difference that's there and we did have an odd number. And we had some pretty heated discussions and it was coming down to Alpine and Cedar Hills against Highland. And the Highland individuals were pretty unhappy about what was going on, on the board. So it, you know, different board or different, uh, council members that were on that board at that time. And, uh, I believe in the future, there will be different council members that will be different than what the current board structure is. And so I think there will be issues. I think we need to structure in a way that if there is disagreement, it can still move forward, but, uh, so it doesn't get stopped. And it can at least move forward, but they'll have to figure it out.
As I recall, the Highland representative, one of the Highland representatives voted with Cedar Hills and Alpine.
Yes.
Could we find a mediator that could be outside the cities? And so they don't have the, anything in the fight to be able to be level headed? I mean, I'm just, if it's a two, two vibe, is there somewhere that we could look for a level headness somewhere to help us out?
We, we discussed that also. Then it comes, well, where does that person live?
You know, I think that, I think we need to step back and look at this, look at this as a district and not as Highland and Alpine. I think we have to look at the whole district and how we provide services to that whole district and not, you know, some, some part of the city is Highland, some part of the, of the district is Alpine. And yes, we are paying the lion's share, but it's still a district that needs funding.
But the budgets come from two different entities that two different cities control. That's, that, that's the problem. If the, if the funding, and I think that we've talked about maybe setting up a district that fund itself, I think that would work. I just think when you have a city that has its own funding going in and you have a separate funding, I would like to see a mediator, you know, when I've had partners, I've usually gotten on really well. Now I'll, I'll give the disclosure. It was my one partner, it was my brother. So you have that, that brother aspect, but there was only two.
Was that good or bad having your brother?
You know, there was two times we did not agree and we, and the first time I bought him out of the business back in probably 95, I bought him out of the business. So when we, when he came back in, we brought a 5% partner. And then we go another 15 years, there was only two times I remember, but those two times we couldn't come decision and we had to look to that one person and that, that person made the decision. I mean, we don't, I'm just saying, I think most of the time they're always gonna be level headed. But there's that one chance that it doesn't happen. And that's what we have to, to me, we have to try to mitigate through that one chance.
So I'm, as far as mediation goes, yes, you can do mediator, but do you want, as elected officials, do you want to turn that over, your responsibility for the finances over to mediator?
Well, I, I, you know, to me, the, the statement that anything above a certain amount, uh, has to go to the councils, I think that's where you, you address that. Because we don't give it away. I think that's a critical piece and I think that needs to be there. Um, so I'm really happy with that. But anything short of that, it's not gonna be a major change. And you know, frankly, you, you just lock it in. If they can't agree, it's status quo. With maybe a CPI increase.
I agree with a lot of the concerns and different things I've heard. I, I still am hung up with the fact that you can have tie votes. I, I just think there needs to be some mechanism into this agreement. And, uh, Tim had an idea there a minute ago. be some mechanism into this agreement. And Tim had an idea there a minute ago, but I think there needs to be some way that you can have a tiebreaker on these issues. And I think it's great to bring it back to the councils and different things, but I am a little concerned. I mean, this is setting up like the US Senate set up. I think that's fine if it keeps Alpine really happy. But at the same time, I think we were voted to represent the citizens of Highland, and I think we need to be sure that we're treated fairly as well. And I'm really concerned that there isn't some mechanism to break a tie here besides bringing this information back to the councils. I think we need to have control over our budgets. I mean, Public Safety Department, and I strongly support them because they play such an important role in our cities, but they are the major portion of our budget. And I'm a little uncomfortable just kind of turning over the major part of our budget without some way to be able to be real responsible on that. So I know there hasn't been a lot of problems in the past, but there have been times. I remember when I was in the council the first time, one of the council members who was on the police budget actually caused quite a bit of problems, I thought. And, and he had someone from Alpine that kind of echoed that. So I think you have to be careful about personalities and things as well. So I don't know. I'd like to say, let's go back and, and suggest, say, gee, there is some concern. Is there some way we can come up with some sort of tiebreaker? Maybe Tim can make some suggestions. I don't know. But I'm uncomfortable with it being not available.
So is this one we want to continue, continue dialoguing via email on suggestions? Because there, like Nathan said, it's not urgent that we pass this now.
I think so. I mean, Scott's right. This is a huge portion of our budget. And we will run into a situation that it will be a two-two, and it will be problematic. The question is, is leaving everything status quo for a period of time going to be acceptable until
Figure it out.
names and faces change? Or is that going to be problematic? That would be the concern.
And I think we have to make it clear that Alpine, we're not concerned about, I, I think, as Kurt said and as others have said, we have a good relationship with Alpine. And I don't want to do anything to make them think differently. It's just the concern about what do we do if there is a difference of opinion and we have a two-to-two tie? What do we do? So the answer is not that Highland gets to make that decision. The answer has to be a win-win for both cities. And I think that's what we're asking, is if we can go back and take a look at how we might do that.
Exactly.
One, one option, I don't know if the city council of Alpine would be interested, was look what Cedar Hills is doing. They are contracting all of their public safety from American Fork. What if Alpine contracted, you know, entered into a 10-year agreement like Cedar Hills did, and we provide all of their public safety for a flat fee?
See, I don't, I don't have any problem if they were interested in doing something like that. Again, it comes back to the win-win. Well, it may be a win-win. It depends on how much we would charge them and how much they think we should charge them.
But say, we've got two, two chiefs that we have a lot of confidence in. And so when they put a budget together, it's not about who pays more, it's about providing service. And that's what both chiefs want, is to provide a service that both cities can feel comfortable with. And so, you know, that's what we have to focus on, not who has control. You know, control is just such a, you know, an incredible issue. Sometimes it gets in the way of making the right decision. So.
Yeah, one, one other thing that sometimes gets lost in this, the expectation is the cost is going to be based upon the number of individuals and the homes that we have. We pay more because we have more individuals, they're paying into it. But the cost is spread around too evenly to whatever process we've established. So it's price per home, ERU, you know, whatever that is. And so it's consistent throughout both cities. It's not, Highland is paying more because, you know, we're nicer guys and we're happier and sweeter. It is, no, everybody pays the same. And now you calculate who lives in which city, and all here is your assessment. I think sometimes that gets lost in this as well.
Yeah. So is there a motion to continue?
I move that we continue.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded to continue.
To a future meeting.
To a future meeting.
Do we want to put a time, I mean, our contract pretty well will adjust, you know, in July when Cedar Hills leaves. Do we want to put a timing on this?
Well, we have to go back to Alpine and meet with them, try to come up with a solution, then we'll bring it back.
We know that, we know it's urgent. It's not...
It's not critical, but it's, it's, it's important.
Okay. Ready for a vote? We're voted, and it's unanimous. All right. Next item, action water conservation. Is that Tim? Are you taking that, or Todd's taking that?
Mayor, council, I'll be brief on this one. This is an ordinance. We were asked as staff to, if you remember, the last year, we had a bad water year. We had very small snowpack up the canyon. With, with the flows out of American Fork Canyon, we had a mayoral proclamation go out about water conservation. We were asked as staff to put that into an ordinance. And here are a couple of the reasons why. Outdoor water usage continues to increase, and it doesn't matter if we have a bad year or a good year. It seems like Highland residents are just using the same amount regardless. And we're, it's really taxing our pressurized irrigation system as far as distribution, storage, all of those things. We never designed the system to, to, to provide this much water to users.
So Todd, just if I remember correctly, we're using an average of six acres per, where we should be three.
It's roughly double. So.
Well, I think when we first put in the voluntary conservation methods, there was a reduction. It's just since then, there hasn't been, we haven't got there where we need to get.
Right. And, you know, and, and we see it every day. I think a lot of Highland city residents contract out their landscape maintenance. And, you know, when you're, when you're a contracted landscaper, your job is to make it green. And if there's no real ordinance or restrictions that stop you from doing that, you overwater. And so, you know, and then other people, I just don't think pay attention to when they're watering and those types of things. But this ordinance helps us to start the process of conservation. The hope is, is this will be the first step to applying for funding, getting meters, doing some things that really will help us to monitor what we use and, and help conserve water. At this rate, we're just not going to be able to keep up. Our distribution lines will need to be upsized to provide the water to the growth. So.
It seems to me that we also need to recognize, whether we have a good water year or a bad water year, we need to be conserving.
Right.
So.
Yeah. And, and that's a great point. I, we, we really need to educate the residents. And, and we've tried through newsletters and different things, that it doesn't matter. We need to have just good practices regardless.
So, so are you saying, from what you just said a minute or two ago, that if we have in place a conservation ordinance or policy, then that actually will enable us to go forth and get some grants or things, that we can get everyone some money towards metering the city? Is that what you're saying?
Right. So we looked at applying for a grant actually this year, and there are some stipulations in that grant application that we were not ready to
Meet.
Meet. The city council actually needs to adopt a program and, and come up with a funding source and show that in the grant application, that they have money to do the 50-50 match. Because most of these grants, the best grant out there is the Smart Water Grant, that you can actually get a grant for up to $1.5 million to help with meters. But we've got to come up with the 1.5 million to, to match the 50% match. And so, until we have something in place, an ordinance in place, a policy of how we're going to fund, we can't apply for that money.
So with $3 million, how many meters would that put in?
So, so we did, we did an estimate this year with, with a complete installation across the board of all of the residents in Highland, and we were just under $5 million. So $3 million would get us two-thirds the way.
And metering would make a big difference in conservation.
So, so in, in other cities that have metered, it is obvious that it's making a difference. So those that don't have meters, they overuse. It's just the, it's just the data.
It's, it's how we all are. You know, I believe that I'm doing a great job, and then you tell me I'm doing a crappy job. And I think I'm, you know, really conserving a lot. You come in and tell me I'm not. I mean, it's, it's relative to what we think, and sometimes we compare ourselves with our neighbors, and we're doing way better than our neighbors, but our neighbors are doing so bad that, you know, makes us look good, but we're still not doing the right thing. So, you know, until we get meters, we're not going to solve this problem big time. Where I see the communication is, is our system, we're using so much additional water that we are, we're taxing our, our system to the level of, we're using 100% of the piping, and we don't have 100% of our people here.
Right.
So every time we add more people, there's no more water to be able to send to them. So those who are currently using it are going to be hit negatively. And, you know, in some ways, that might be the right solution. When Beacon Hills or the northern area, we're using too much, we basically shut their system off because they drain the pond too fast.
I beg your pardon.
Except, except for Mr. Irwin there, he, he did a great job. But the water got shut off for a little bit, and all of a sudden, it came, it hit home. And I think we saw a 30, 40% decrease for a while because of, it all of a sudden hit home. Or we threatened them that we were going to shut it off. We shut it off, didn't we, a couple days?
Not that I'm aware of. Not in my time here.
We sent a little...
Actually, didn't have to. We sent the notice and said, if we don't do this, we're going to have to shut it off.
And, and we saw a huge decrease. I think that's the kind of thing that, you know, is going to have to happen before people get serious about it. I mean, would you rather have nothing? Or would you rather have something, kind of?
Right. And, and with time, I think that some of those issues are going to come up, where we can't provide the water. And, and it may be a hard lesson to learn, but I'm hoping through this ordinance, that it's kind of the first step of people to start monitoring themselves.
So this is similar to the resolution that we did?
It's, it, this is almost identical to the proclamation that went out. This is just an ordinance that allows us to permanently monitor. And, and this is for us to go out and really catch the high-end abusers. That's it. Because right now, the, the proclamation is a mayoral proclamation with the ordinance, then it follows all of our other ordinances and the, the, the fines or whatever, you know, the, the consequences, if you will.
Chief Control in jail, too.
Yeah. So let's talk about the last section in the ordinance about the fines, the institute and different things.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with those, but how are we going to enforce those unless people are metered?
So basically, the way we enforce it now is, we do have people in, throughout the city that water daily. They water every day. And that's something that we can easily see.
So it'd be self, somebody would report them, maybe, and then they go look at it?
Well, now, we, we, we have two employees in our pressurized irrigation department. They will have a stack of door hangers that they have, and it has a carbon copy on it. And when they see people that are violating the ordinance, they will hang a door hanger with all of the information on it. And we will have the carbon copy. If it happens again, then they actually get the fine. And so we will, through our code enforcement, we will have to keep track of all of this. But it's, it's ultimately our public works guys that will enforce it.
But to answer your question, Scott, we bought, we actually have had people call us and say, hey, my neighbor's watering a whole bunch. We had one last year.
Was 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
24 hours a day, seven days a week.
It never turned off. So.
So right now, self-reporting, as we get meters in, you'll be able to meter.
Right. In that situation, last year, we actually went out and shut off the, the PI connection. Because they were being unresponsive, and so we shut it off. So.
For a year, because they use two years worth of water in one year. So we've shut it off for a full year.
What, what do you mean by unresponsive? They just ignored your warnings or something?
Right, right.
Were they fined?
I honestly don't think they were home for the full two weeks that we were trying to get a hold of them. And so we just shut it off. Because the sprinklers never turned off. So those are the types of individuals that we will do the code enforcement. But until we get meters, we will not catch the rest of the city. So the, the small offenders, you know, watering here and there.
I don't think we're really catching people. I think the, the majority of people just don't know that they're out of compliance. Because you don't have a way to measure it. So I think, you know, it'll self-regulate for the majority. And the other way, you know, if they do use more water than they should, they self-regulate as well, because they'll pay more.
So do we have any rice farmers in the city?
No.
Okay.
We did last year.
That, that one was close.
Todd, did we actually find the individual that was going 24 hours, just shut their water off?
Mm-hmm.
It sounds like they had a valve that was stuck. When you said they're gone out of town...
We shut their water off.
They might have a valve or something that was stuck, stuck on watering. I mean, if they're gone and they can't be responsive, I mean, and I know the ordinance that has something about that, about maintenance for 72 hours, so.
Technically, that one was a, our, our first warning, because we never got through to them. And so we just shut it off because we weren't getting that. We couldn't have it running 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
One of the things that, that does concern me, though, is we have metering on our culinary water. And we're kind of led, given the impression that if somebody has a leak or uses an exorbitant amount of water, it sends up a red flag. Does somebody watch that?
On, on the culinary?
Yeah.
Yes.
The reason I ask that question is that I had to fill up my pool last month or month or so ago. I used an extra 17,000 or 18,000 gallons. And so my water bills shot up, but nothing was ever said. The city didn't know I had to refill my pool. So I don't know if anybody caught that or not.
Yeah. So once a month, Candace, our utility billing clerk, runs a report on anybody over a certain amount of gallons and generates that. And we actually have notes on the accounts for individuals who have pools that we know of. So you, she probably saw your account, looked in the notes and said, Tim Irwin has a pool, which means we don't contact him because once a year, we see a spike in his use.
That's the other thing that worries me. The city knows way too much about me.
It's probably because years ago, we saw that, called you, and you told us. So we put it in the account. How about that? You volunteered the information.
Well, yeah, actually, we did, we did come down to the city and get a permit.
Oh, that could have been the case then.
To fill the pool the first time. But the second time, we didn't. So, because we filled it from our culinary water.
Right, right.
We know about your jacuzzi, too. So, we know about your jacuzzi, too.
And Tim, a lot of times, they will look to see if it's a spike just for a month, that it's something like that. If it's a leak, it, it's obviously a month, two months, three months. It's a continuing thing.
I was just curious as to how that would manifest itself.
It's a report that we run.
It's a report. We scan it, we look over it. Do we catch everything? No. But when the customer gets a bill that's twice as much as they're normally paying, they're like, oh, what happened? And we get a phone call.
Do you read the meters every single month?
Yes.
Any other questions about the ordinance for me?
Oh, I just wanted to make sure we're not putting anybody in jail as part of the...
I was waiting for you to make a comment on that after I said somebody's going to be thrown in jail. You didn't say anything.
Yeah, well, it took me a moment to come around to it.
So I'll move that we approve the ordinance, zero dash two zero one nine dash whatever you're going to give it. The ordinance amending chapter 13.70, water conservation of the Highland City Municipal Code as presented.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded.
And authorize the mayor to sign it.
Okay, thank you, Brian, for making everybody feel good. Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, next item. I believe that is Nathan, and it's budget discussion. So this is not an action item, this is just a discussion. We will be following this up with a work session on the 25th, which I hope everybody in the council will be at. And any interested parties in the audience will also attend.
Okay, next.
Yes, please come.
So a couple of things, uh, I need to add, uh, with this is when we're working on the budget, we go through nine, twelve, forty-five versions by, by the time we finally get the final one done. We're on version eight and so we have changes that we make. You're going to see some changes from the staff report to what's today. That's just, we refine our information, get new information, add to it. One thing we have to remember is this is a comprehensive look at a very high scale. Uh, I use this graphic to show we're on the left. Uh, tonight, we're really not going to get into the weeds per se. Uh, we'd invite you to meet with Gary and I to go through line by line if you'd like. And we can also get into some further discussion and further weeds per se at our work session on the twenty-fifth. So a popsicle for anybody that can knows the-
Splash pad.
Well, besides Brian, that knows the, the figure on the right. Yes, you're right. That is splash pad. Thanks. Go ahead. Oh, hey, let's see if this works. Hey, look at this. Okay, so first thing, uh, high level, uh, talking about our enterprise funds. Uh, if you remember, we hired Zions Bank to, uh, review our expenditures and our revenues, uh, that we have. Uh, we looked at, uh, upcoming projects, what projects may have not been included, what, uh, should have been included, um, et cetera. And basically, and we also looked at the projects that are going to be needed to, uh, serve the Bowyer, uh, development. Uh, if you recall, the, uh, council has chosen a cash, uh, approach versus a bonding approach. In other words, we try to save our money upfront for cash, with cash and pay for it that way rather than issue bonds and debt for that.
Can I ask you a quick question here?
Yes.
Right, let's just start. So when Zions looked at the Bowyer project, was that before or after, uh, we understood that all that property was going to be sold?
Uh, it was in the last month.
In the last month?
Last month. So we've done this in the last month. Uh, basically what we're seeing in our analysis is the sewer rate will need, need to increase by thirty-three cents or so a month, uh, which is a minor increase. We're happy with that. Uh, our storm, if you remember in our utility rate study in two thousand and twenty-three, it identified an increase of seventy cents a month, uh, based on projections now, uh, that would not be needed. Uh, the, uh, pressurized irrigation fund is fine, which we're very happy with. That was the one we were most concerned about. However, if we chose to do, uh, meters, we would need additional revenue for those meters. Um, but in culinary, we have no change. So what this means is that our utility rate structures, uh, with the, with that minor change with the sewer can accommodate and we'll be able to fund the projects that we need to, uh, uh, moving forward that have been identified in our capital plans and our, uh, and our maintenance plans. So that's good news.
This is awesome news.
So.
We're looking ahead. We're seeing the issues. I mean, this is great.
So that is really good news.
And we weren't that far off, which is really cool.
No, we're doing pretty good. Um, okay. Uh, just a reminder, uh, the council hired, uh, Lewis and Young to do a, uh, general fund study. Uh, they, as part of that study, they created five scenarios. We're looking at, uh, budget years, uh, uh, fiscal year nineteen through fiscal year twenty-three. The goal was to have a twenty percent fund, general fund balance. Uh, the assumptions that we used, uh, had a revenue assumption growth of five point two percent and expense, uh, three percent general increase. Uh, we included unfunded expenses in operations of maintenance and capital. Now, one thing I need to say about this is anytime you do these studies, you're drawing a line at that specific date. Things change before and after, uh, but it's our best guess or line in sand at that, at, at that particular time.
So just let me ask another quick question. So our fund balance has been running at least twenty-five percent.
Correct.
And even higher than we've had to, but okay.
Correct. So the goal, when we did this study was a twenty percent fund balance.
The other, the other thing, the problem with that, the concept of twenty or twenty-five is also the issue of we, we've held it at that because we haven't been spending on things that we should have and things are falling behind. And so putting it at twenty percent may sound like it's a decrease, but when you put it at twenty percent, but we start paying for things that we've been kicking the can down the road, it, it becomes even harder. So it's.
And the twenty percent's a one time, it's really not, it's one, going from twenty-five to twenty is one time money.
It's not a lot to get there.
So basically what the findings of the study did, I won't go through all the scenarios. Uh, what the findings said, if we did not increase revenue at all, uh, we would be in a negative fund balance in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. Okay? So that means we go through all our savings, all our reserves by fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. All right. So, uh, we need to keep that in mind because, uh, I think it's important as we talk about public safety and others, uh, other issues, that we have an issue with the general fund and, uh, public safety and we'll talk about that. We just need to remember that. So, uh, when we started putting, staff started putting the, uh, budget together, uh, for this next fiscal years, uh, the goals we came up with is we understand that we're a service organization. Uh, we're not selling widgets. We're not doing anything like that. And, and what makes or breaks service organizations, at least in my opinion, is, uh, your employees. You can have employees that have great service, uh, to our residents. Uh, and you can have employees that have, uh, poor service and we've, uh, at least in my experience, I've seen the impact of both. We tried to look at a realistic view of the expenditures. In other words, we didn't just say, hey, over the last, in this particular line item, we've spent five thousand dollars. So over the last five years, we spent five thousand dollars, therefore we're going to put five thousand. We actually looked at it and said, do we need that five thousand? What are we spending it for? Uh, what are we looking at? We had a goal of not to decrease the level of service. As you know, over the last few years, uh, we've had crunch with our general fund, uh, public safety, other, other issues where we add, uh, we add things that we need to take care of, but not increase the, uh, the funding appropriately. One of those, uh, good examples is, um, snowplows. Uh, until we purchased our last snowplows, we had the same number of snowplows as Alpine did with quite a few more lane more miles than Alpine does. So that's one example of the crunch that we have. Uh, we, uh, were trying to balance the budget without using previous year revenue. Um, and if we could, we wanted to increase trail and open space maintenance. That's been a big, uh, concern of the councils, uh, recently. So we wanted to do that. So here is, uh, a brief overview of our rev, revenue and expenditures. Uh, Gary has gone in and forecasted what our revenue is going to be, uh, for fiscal year nineteen and our expenditures. Uh, if you look in fiscal year twenty, uh, really, uh, our revenue's down. We've talked about why and I'll review that in a second, but we're down about seventy-six thousand dollars in revenue. Uh, overall, and-
And can you explain that real quick?
Yes, I'll explain that in a second. And so you'll see a corresponding decrease in expenses also, uh, with that. So why has revenue changed? Well, we have a decline in building permit revenue, uh, worth about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh, we have an impact on our bond payments because of that. Uh, just for your information, we are in our budget, we have, uh, fifty-five new homes, uh, that we're budgeting for. Uh, as far as our projections, usually that's around ninety. So that gives you, uh, an idea of where we are, uh, as far as the reduction in new homes that we're doing. Uh, we have the library portion, the motor vehicle tax that is now going to the library. That was twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, and then you can see the increase in the tax revenue that we have there. We have a thirty-nine thousand dollar property tax and a hundred thousand dollars in sales tax. The two hundred thousand dollar in Utah County Road Tax, uh, was approved, but that is earmarked funds. We can't use it for anything. We only can use that for, uh, specific things and we'll get to what our proposal is in a minute. So Scott, did that answer your question?
Yeah, it helps, but we're just looking at the next fis, fiscal year, right?
Correct.
Because in the future, if some of these projects come to be, I mean, there'll be a lot of increase in building permits, I would think.
Yes. So in looking at specifically the property south of Lone Peak High School, we're planning on about eighty permits a year. Uh, based, best case scenario, they'll start building homes, uh, this time or a little bit earlier next year. That's best case scenario.
So you're estimating eighty per year? Is that what they're saying?
Yes, that's what they're saying. So it's about a six to seven year project. So, depending how it goes. Okay. So our proposed expenditures overall, this excludes public safety. Okay? We've done everything, everything I'm going over with you right now is excluding public safety. So this is the general fund as it relates to streets and roads, uh, attorney, court.
Parks.
Parks, uh, recorder, planning and zoning, engineering, ex, administration, et cetera. Uh, these, uh, increase, so, uh, we decreased those expenditures by seventy-four thousand dollars. Okay? Um, we have budget. We got our medical, uh, back. Uh, the proposal from United Healthcare is a increase of four point nine percent. We felt pretty good about that. Uh, we don't have any increase in dental. One thing, uh, for salary planning and things like that that we've done is as we look at the duties and responsibilities of positions, uh, we spread them out. So if you have a utility billing clerk, well, they bill utilities. So some of that salary should be charged to the enterprise funds, for example. So when you look at it, it's about forty-nine percent, but when you look at it, the, the full impact of the medical increase is about fourteen thousand, six hundred dollars. The gen, the impact on the general fund is only seventy-one hundred bucks. Okay? Because in those studies that we did with the enterprise funds, we included these increases as, as part of our utility rate studies when we did those. So you look at a merit increase, it's in there. Uh, overall impact is forty-four thousand. Uh, to the general fund is twenty-one five. That's even going to be a little bit less because that assumes that everybody gets a merit as of July first. And, and we do it on anniversary versus work, work anniversary versus calendar. So it'll be a little bit less than that also. Okay? Department overview, administration, we've created an IT internal service fund. If you remember last year, we spent quite a bit of money, uh, to, for new computers, uh, because all those were old and we had the money at the time, so we spent it. Uh, we're creating an I, a, internal service fund. Ideally, you would replace some every year, but we haven't been able to do that. So each department, each year is going to be, uh, contributing to this fund. So at the time, it's to replace computers. We have the money. So think of it as a saving account for IT equipment. Uh, overall, there's a decrease in the, from the fling to the general fund of about four thousand dollars. We have G I S survey, uh, of nine thousand dollars. We also, in engineering, also increased, uh, some money in consulting to help tout out with roads. Uh, we got some pretty big projects this fall and some other consulting services that we have there. Um, parks and open space, this goes back to the two hundred thousand dollars, uh, from the Utah County Sales Tax. What we've done is we split that in half. A hundred thousand dollars of that would go to trail maintenance. The other hundred thousand would go to road projects and that would cover things like curb gutter and sidewalk on streets that we don't have it for a certain portion as we're repairing roads.
Is this a actual increase above what was already happening the years before?
Correct. Cause this is from-
So if we had fifty thousand, now we're saying it's a hundred and fifty thousand?
Correct. Yes.
So, uh, is Todd going to come up with a maintenance plan for the trails with priorities like the roads?
Yes.
And, and we'll discuss that on a yearly basis?
Yes, we're going to try to come up with a plan similar to what we have with the roads. So we'll make it through in the next five, seven years, the trails. Well, we'll see where the hundred thousand goes, how far it takes us. So. We'll, we'll bring that, we'll bring that plan back to the council.
Yeah, even with that, we want a plan still because we want to be able to show residents where.
Right, yep. We'll, we'll try to break that up and show what trails we do each year and, and, and have that approved through the council.
Cause I'll have a lot of people ask me, well, where is my trail on priority? I mean, the trail by my home and, and stuff, because I get asked that all the time about the roads and we have something we can show people, but it'd be great to be able to do that with the trails.
So, uh, we're actually working with an engineering firm that's going to use one of their interns over the summer to help with that project. Okay? Uh, the other thing that we did is for last few years, the pressurized irrigation, the general fund has been paying to water the parks. Uh, state law does allow the P I fund to pay for that. Uh, if we do proper notice, that's part of this proposal. And then obviously if the council agreed to that, then we would have to do, uh, proper notice. And checking with other cities, uh, is, uh, is a lot of the cities' general fund does not pay for that water. So.
Their enterprise funds do.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, recorder, we increased, uh, the election cost, uh, thirty-six, thirty-seven thousand dollars is the total cost for the elections. Okay? Uh, we had the bond payments increase. Library, you'll see a market adjustment, uh, for the employees. Here's the extra hundred thousand dollars that I mentioned from the Utah County Sales Tax that'll go to like sixty-four hundred west. We have some areas where you could put curb and gutter in, uh, when we do the road. It's better for the road because it gives a hard edge, uh, for it, but that's where that funding would go. Okay?
Or we could use this at our new park. We could, you put in some improvements there with the, can we put in the curb gutter?
In the road improvements, yeah. Yes.
Just a quick question, Todd. How, how far does a hundred thousand dollars go for curb and gutter? If that's all you're using it?
So the, the concern we have is as we go through these roads, I'll give a good example, sixty-four hundred west. That, there's, there's several locations on that road that do, do not have curb gutter sidewalk. A good majority of them are larger parcels that will develop. The developer will put it in when they develop. But there are two or three locations that are just an existing home. Doesn't, it has curb gutter sidewalk on both sides. It's fairly easy to put it in with the project and then it's finished. And very rarely will we ever have one of these homeowners come in and say, I want to do it myself. They live there. They're used to it. So those are the types of things that we would love to take care of. And in, in fact, we did a few last year with six thousand west. There were a few places we finished off little pieces here and there. Um, and we, we anticipate doing some of that with sixty-four hundred west as well. But we would like to do more of it just because if, if we don't do it with this, with the road project while we're constructing, it's so much more expensive. So to do it while we already have a contractor there doing concrete work, doing asphalt work, i- it's much better. So this hundred thousand dollars will go a long way.
So how much is that per linear foot?
Well, you, you, well, you've got to look at curb, curb and gutters, twenty bucks a linear foot. Sidewalks usually twenty-five bucks a linear foot because it's five feet wide. Um, but then you're talking about how far is the existing asphalt from the curb? You know, we have some shoulder there that we've got to completely excavate out and so it, it all depends. It all depends on the location, but a hundred thousand dollars would take care of two or three homes to finish off.
So I assume that if you put curb and gutter in a sidewalk, it creates a little bit of a parkway between the sidewalk and the curb and gutter. Who's responsible for taking care of that?
The homeowner at that point.
At that point. And I assume that we're looking more at straight sidewalks now than the curving ones.
The only place that we have, uh, meandering sidewalks is where we have the parkway detail on our major roads. We have twenty-nine feet of, of landscaping from the top back of curb to the property line. And, and then the, the sidewalk.
Residential areas would be straight.
Everything in residential or even just most of our collector roads is just straight curb and gutter and sidewalk.
Okay, so this chart shows, uh, since fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, the individual departments and, uh, how much the, uh, overall growth has been. So overall in the general fund, if you look at from two thousand and fifteen, uh, those appeal authorities, administration, et cetera, uh, the growth has been two point six percent. Public safety has been seven point seven. Fire and administration has been ten point seven and police has been five point five percent. So you can see that we're reducing costs in our general fund categories, increasing to fund, increasing costs in public safety, which is normal. Uh, but we're kind of at a tipping point right now where we really are affecting level of service here. So, um, and I'm happy to email this out so you guys can actually look at the, uh, how specific spreadsheet, you can look at it closer on the numbers and, and so forth.
Please do.
Uh, exclusions, things that we did not include in the budget. Uh, we did not include the general plan update. Uh, we did not, if you recall, a couple of months ago, we talked about, uh, garbage revenue adjustment. We did not include- We did not include that in this version of the budget. Excluding the trail maintenance that I mentioned, we did not increase, we weren't able to increase in park and open space maintenance. And we didn't have any increases for Mountain Ridge Park as it relates to maintenance and ongoing costs, okay? So that's where we are. So let's talk about public safety cuz that's the elephant in the room these days and see where we are. So in, in administration, we're seeing an increase of about fifty-six hundred bucks. Police is two hundred ninety-one thousand and fires five hundred forty-eight. Now, remember when I said at the beginning, it's line in the sand and everything changes, okay? So we know a couple of changes that are coming. For example, in police and fire, this doesn't represent the decrease in medical. This has a ten percent versus a four point nine. So it's still gonna, it's still going to come down. I don't know how much, I don't, off the cuff, I'm hope, it'd be nice if it's significant, but off the cuff, I don't think we'll see huge significant changes in it. So we see a total, this is Highlands portion only, a total of eight hundred and forty-five, eight hundred forty-six thousand dollar increase that we have. Before I get to their, oops. It's needless to say, based on what we have, we just cut seventy-four and we're barely balanced. And that's with public safety flat. We don't have eight hundred forty-five thousand dollars lying around per se to fund this. So I'm gonna go through police and fire, the big picture, what they're trying, what the chiefs are trying to accomplish with their proposed budgets. I would encourage you, if you haven't, to meet with the chiefs or meet with me and Gary and go over it. We'll bring the chiefs in and talk, and talk about it. In the police department, the primary goal in the budget is employee retention. What we're seeing is we're seeing larger agencies being able to provide more in benefits and in pay. The other day, I looked at ULCT's website, Job Bank, and it had a whole page of police officer jobs. So we're just stealing from, from everybody at this point. So what that includes is a dollar fifty an hour salary adjustment for all employees, three percent merit increase and retirement, adding a 401, 401K matching contribution and adjusting for tier one, tier two. The legislature did address that, supposed to kick in next year. But this, this budget included it at this time. Cuz, well, and I'll tell you why in a second.
Can I, Chief, would you mind just talking to some of those points? This is your world. Anybody has a question on, you know, the employee retention or why the dollar fifty an hour? Why the retirement? If you could talk to those?
So Nathan hit on the major points of that. We are currently in a, in a market where the pool of officers has shrunk to the point where we're trying to retain the, the, the officers that we do have that have the experience and also bring in quality officers that are new officers that we're, that we're trying to hire. With that pool shrinking, as Nathan indicated, there are agencies that are paying more hourly wage than what we're at. To bump us up to a dollar fifty an hour, bump each employee up a dollar fifty an hour would bring our starting wage to twenty-one dollars and thirty-five cents an hour. There's also three percent merit on top of that that's based on an evaluation. And not, not everybody would get the three percent. I would hope everyone would get three percent, but we don't always get everybody there. Sometimes we have some performance reviews that we need to increase our, our productivity and, and the employee and, and what they're doing, so. Nathan mentioned the retirement. The budget numbers that you saw earlier did not include what you're seeing up here before. So there's going to be, like he indicated, there's going to be a decrease. This is a four point nine percent versus a tier one, between a tier one employee and a tier two employee. And if you don't know what those are, officers that were hired after July first, two thousand eleven, are considered a tier two employee and, and receive a decreased benefit at their retirement as opposed to those that were hired previously. And so what we're trying to do, and what the legislature is trying to do is to bring those officers that were hired after that point to more of an equal status of those that were hired prior to. I think that's, well, that's one of the reasons that we believe in law enforcement, that we're seeing a decreased pool in law enforcement officers joining or wanting to be law enforcement officers is because of the retirement was, was such a decrease and took a hit in two thousand eleven. And then again, as was mentioned, the 401K is a, a five percent matching contribution. This is something that other agencies that are offering, this is something we're doing to stay competitive.
That is gonna be matching?
That, that, that is, that's a five percent contribution that is matching, correct.
So let me ask a couple of questions here.
Yeah.
So, I mean, this is obvious that this is a ten percent increase in our general fund budget. And what are your anticipated needs in future years? Obviously, there'll be some merit increases and a few things, but this is a big jump for next year's budget. Are you assuming there's gonna be big jumps every year or things kinda even out a little bit or?
This is a jump to, again, to, to get us to become competitive. There's not gonna be, I don't anticipate a jump like this in future years. We have put together a five-year projected plan that, based on needs and call volume, we would probably add an officer here or there, probably two within the next five years is my projection.
So you're thinking it'll plateau off a little bit with minor increases?
Yeah, and I think with what's happened with the legislature this year and, and the things that will go into effect next year, we're not gonna be stealing from each other. When I say stealing, police departments are taking qualified or, or really experienced officers from each other now. I'm guilty of doing the same thing. We've taken some really good officers from some agencies in Salt Lake County that have come down and joined us simply because they've seen what we have to offer and would rather be here as opposed to the agencies that they came from. But I don't see, we've also lost officers to other agencies. So it's just one of those things that's happening right now. I'm hoping with the legislature fixing the retirement, that that's gonna kinda level off and maybe not be as, as much of that going on as there is right now, so. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, that's helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
So the fire department increase basically comes down to staffing. Our existing staffing, we have three in Alpine, three in Cedar Hills, and three in Highland for a total of nine. Now, the way the fire department works is they have three shifts. So nine times three is twenty-seven, so you have a need for twenty-seven positions. The proposed staffing would be eight per shift. That would be three in Alpine, three in Highland, and a dedicated ambulance. And I'll explain how this works in the next couple of slides. Excuse my rude graphics, but this is the best way I could come up with explaining this. So if you have a fire, a structured fire, what will happen in our district is we will roll every asset we have to that fire. Also, with our mutual aid agreements, we will be getting assets from the surrounding communities, whether it's AFPG and or Lehigh, we'd be getting assets through them. Works vice versa, is if there's a structured fire in one of those communities and we can respond, then we respond. So realize all our fire assets, when there's a structured fire, is gonna be a fire. That means that we will not be able to respond to that second call if it happens during that time. There, there won't be any change in that. That's how it is today, and there wouldn't be a change. And the second call is infrequent, so at the same time as a structured fire. Where it makes a difference is in the medical calls. And our primary call volume and load is in medical calls. So the first call for a medical call, you would have a fire truck and an ambulance responding. Whether, I, I show this as Highland, from the Highland station, assuming it's in Highland. It would, that's where the first response. If we had a second concurrent call, that response would come from the available fire engine. So that'd be three individuals going to that second concurrent call.
The reason why? It's the fire engine?
It's the staffing, isn't it?
It's because it has a-
Oh, it has a transport. So we have a transport and all our firefighters are EMTs if I remember right.
So all, so for clarity, all of our firefighters are EMT. That's the majority of all of our calls.
I thought they were mainly paramedics.
Sorry, paramedics.
Yeah, there's a big difference.
Yes, very, very good point. So they're paramedics. We have one ambulance in the district today. And when Cedar Hills leaves, we're talking about keeping one ambulance. We have one fire truck that has a transport ability, so it can act like a, like a, an ambulance. So that would give us basically two options for an ambulance. A fire truck and a, and a regular ambulance is what we're talking about here as deploying the ambulance to the first situation. If there's a sec one, you deploy the, the fire truck with the ambulance capability because they are paramedics in that, they can treat them just like a, an ambulance.
Nathan, would we ever figure out how many times we get a second call, what the percentage would end up being?
I don't know that. I don't, sorry.
It, it does happen. This opens up a question that I always have, and I know it's a staffing issue, but I have to explain this to people, like when there's an ambulance call, why the fire truck shows up as well? It just seems like we could staff the ambulance on a lot of these things without having to bring the fire truck. But I see that in all cities. I have, this is a, always been a mystery to me. Is it just a staffing?
Yes, so a major medical call, let's say cardiac arrest, would take four to six guys to treat. And that's why you have that number of personnel.
That's why they bring the fire truck.
Personnel driven.
So they couldn't just hop into another truck and come?
They could, but if, but if you could-
It's expensive to bring that fire truck all the time.
If you put everybody in the ambulance, then if something else happened, they, they couldn't get back to their station. You put them in the fire truck, they still have the ability if they're not needed there. Because most of what they do is paramedic support. But if there was a fire, they would not have, they'd have to drive back to the station. It would slow down their time, so it's kinda like why, when you see a police officer who's on call takes his car to the store or to church or to their kid's activity.
So you're talking about if they came in a separate truck instead of bringing the fire truck?
Well, yeah, it's, it's response time. If they're in the fire truck, they can go immediately to wherever they go. And so they're there for paramedic use, but they're, they're bringing the fire truck because it gives them a quicker response to any other call that could happen.
It'd be interesting to see how often that happens. That the same reason when they go to go grocery shopping, they take a truck? I, I've asked, why did they take the big, big ladder truck?
It's expensive to drive those trucks.
Well, they said they're trying to train the guys. They have to train them how to drive that big ladder truck. That's why they're going out.
The parallel parking is amazing with that big truck.
But primarily, it's for people to treat the patient.
Right.
Is why, is, is the, is the numbers.
But it just seems to me, though, that they could get there to treat the patient without taking the fire truck. Now, I understand what Brian's saying, but that's exception rather than the rule. It, it, it's just always mystified me as a healthcare worker, why they need to bring the fire truck when they could just bring a, a separate small truck?
Yeah.
I don't know.
So it, it also allows us to transport a patient without a, closing a station. In other words, if you're out on the first call, the patient has to be trans, transferred. With that dedicated ambulance thereoff, the fire truck returns to the station. If you don't have the dedicated ambulance, off they go and you don't have anybody for the station. Does that make sense?
So they, they have to, the ambulance isn't just to go over there and, and treat them, it's to physically take them to the hospital.
Correct.
They're physically out of Highland for a period of time. We have no ambulance service, and that's the primary function of our paramedics during the day. That's what they deal with the most. This gives us the ability to still have access to ambulance service while they're out, albeit, you know, a fire truck with a carrier. It's still the ability to take care of them.
Okay, so as, as Chief William mentioned, we asked for five-year expense plans for public safety. This includes everything that you, that we are aware of. In the middle is nineteen twenty?
Right.
Well, will you highlight that for me, Aaron? Thank you. Nineteen twenty is right there. So the increases that you see in the proposals primarily, as Brian mentioned, are staffing. It's two new officers over the next two years. It includes a fire marshal, it includes replacement of the ladder truck, and it includes replacement of the breathing air pack system for the firefighters. Those are the major expenses that are going. You'll notice at the end, if, you know, we're making some assumptions here based on average growth and, and so forth. In fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, a bill would be over, be about five point three million dollars.
Does this change staffing? Like, current, currently, I think the proposal coming up is five full-time and three part-time. Is this, does this go all full-time by twenty twenty-four or?
Uh, no. It does, as far as I know, it doesn't change that. It does add one new FTE in the fire marshal. So this is what it looks like if you look individual year. So the one in the middle is the one we're looking at now. And then next year, it would be another three hundred thousand dollar increase and so forth and so on through twenty-three, twenty-four. Okay, so that's really what we're looking at long-term as far as public safety expenditures go. Now, as Chief William mentioned, you know, from his perspective, if the call volume wasn't there, he wouldn't be asking for the person. But we felt that we had, we have to start someplace with a plan, right? To know what we're looking at and getting into, so this is our, our best case that we have.
Nathan, with this increase, I mean, if we have, just assuming it's six hundred and fifty to seven hundred new homes there at USDC by twenty twenty-four, they're already contributing to the budget. So some of that funds are helping there, right?
Yes, in theory, yes. Yes, it would help. Okay, so the lone peak budget timeline, as Mayor mentioned earlier in the meeting, is that once a budget is adopted by the board, we have contractual obligation to finance that budget based on what our assessment is. So if they adopt it for the proposed, that would be the eight hundred and forty-some-odd thousand dollars. We're hoping to do a tentative budget on May ninth and a final budget on or before June thirteenth. What we're trying to do is have the board adopt a budget so the cities can adopt their, their budgets. If you remember, excuse me, a couple of years ago, we didn't want to adopt our budget until we had the final numbers from public safety. So same kinda thing. June eighteenth is when we are scheduled and advertising for adoption of the city's final budget. State law does require adoption by the end of June. That's a new change this year. Okay, so the question is, is how do we fund the public safety increase? Remember, it doesn't address any of the general fund increases that we talked about, just the public safety. One option is to use fund balance. What that would mean would we be a negative two percent by fiscal year twenty twenty-one. So that's really not an option cuz we'd still have to rebuild it. We have to maintain a minimum of five percent, and that's far from our goal of twenty percent. Could we cut the existing budget? As many of you know, we've spent significant time over the last, since two thousand ten, refining and cutting where we could. Staff believes that we could not cut it without a significant impact on level of service. If we require an additional sixteen percent for the general fund to absorb the increase from each department. Some of those departments, it's unrealistic. You can't cut garbage, you can't cut our bomb payments, the auditor, things like that. I can't cut sixteen percent. Those are just sunk costs that, the cost of doing business. And in some budgets, like a treasurer budget, when it's one person, you really don't have enough money in the operational, non-employee cost alone to cover that sixteen percent that would have to be cut. Does that make sense?
Which ultimately means that since you can't cut sixteen percent out of garbage, you're gonna have to cut thirty percent out of somewhere else-
Correct.
-to make up for it. Why are you pointing yourself, Todd? Cuz he's the target.
Thank you.
You'd lose thirty-two percent of the engineer.
Which leg did you wanna give up?
Basically, that would mean we'd have no consulting budget at all. Streets and roads at sixteen percent is a hundred thousand dollars, over a hundred thousand dollars. We'd have to find out of that. So that's just, that's the impact that we're looking at. Other funding options, can we do new revenue? There's two options, property tax increase and fee creation or adopting a fee. Remember, what we're gonna show you only address the current public safety proposal. It doesn't provide any relief to general fund that we've shown in the general fund plan. It doesn't- It doesn't, uh, address future public, public safety requests. And the council's subcommittee had different opinions on what, what to talk about, how much to request for, and things like that. So we'll go over that in detail.
Nate, can I ask a quick question? So, you know, I was just thinking about the general fund reserve. And, and that's kind of opt each city decide how much you want. And have we looked at what other cities keep in their general fund reserve to kind of get a comparison? Are we on the high end of that? Are we kind of average?
Uh, we, we have in the past. It's a little bit difficult to compare apples to apples. What we need to do is go back and compare people with our same number. For example, Lehigh may have a fifteen percent, you know, goal, but because their budget is thirty million dollars or whatever it is.
That's two hundred million.
Two hundred million. Twenty-five percent of two hundred million is a lot of money. Twenty, twenty-five percent of nine million is not a lot of money. So, but we can certainly go and do that.
It'd be just interesting to compare.
We'll try to get some apples to apples.
Especially when we're talking about revenue increases.
Yeah. So we'll try to, and, and get some apples to apples. Cities are same size, revenue, that kind of thing. Okay? Uh, was I getting this part or you?
No.
Okay, now, I have my tax expert over here. So, jump in, Aaron.
I've spent way too much time reading state code. So hopefully, especially because a lot of it's changed this year. Property tax increase, to do the property tax increase option, to fund the full amount that we currently have right now means a forty-nine percent increase to the city's tax rate. And I should clarify, I, hopefully, everybody knows that when you look at your property tax bill, Highland City is only around thirteen percent of your property tax bill. So it's not a fifty percent increase on your total bill, but a fifty percent increase on our portion.
Our portion's about thirteen point eight, I think, when I looked at it.
Yeah, varies a little bit year to year, but-
Yeah, it's close to fourteen. When I was on the council before, it was around sixteen point three. So it's dropped because the school district keeps increasing their portion-
School district keeps rising.
And the county has two, so we get a smaller portion.
Exactly. Um, there was a new-
We don't get a smaller portion.
Well, a smaller, not a smaller portion, a smaller percentage. I misspoke.
Yeah.
Um, there was a new bill passed this year that allows cities to dedicate a portion of their property tax to anything they want, as long as they do it by ordinance. So like we do for the library, have a dedicated tax, you could also do that for public safety if council wanted to do that. The one good thing about this is in past years, like for example, when we were looking at the road fee versus a property tax increase, some residents were very concerned that it just goes in the general fund and it disappears, right? It can go to anything in the general fund. If council wanted to silo the money to try and give some more assurance, you could do that now. For some people, property tax is tax deductible, depends on every situation, so I can't say everybody. It is based on your home value, which some people argue for, that that's a good reason to do it this way, and some people argue against. So I'm not going to attempt to do either one of those. It is, property tax is the traditional way of funding public safety. While some cities do small ambulance fees here and there, it's certainly out of the norm to do a large public safety fee. What does it actually mean for our homeowners? So the average home value in Highland is five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. That would mean a two hundred dollar a year property tax increase. Break it down by month to kind of make it more digestible is sixteen dollars and seventy cents. And then the rest of the chart shows you various levels of home values in Highland and what that would mean. Again, these numbers will change as we develop new information. Timeline as to what this means. So we would adopt a budget, or council would still adopt a budget June eighteenth, and then set a truth and taxation meeting for, for August. We cannot hold that meeting until August because in July, the county or the state sends out tax notices saying, hey, your taxes are staying the same or they're going up, this is what we expect, and here's the information on that. So that's why we have to wait until August until that. If council did choose to do this and did approve a tax increase, and if that tax increase were referred, it would go on the twenty-nineteen general election ballot. Sponsors would need to get a little over eleven hundred signatures in order to qualify for the ballot. If they did not get those number of signatures, we could put the tax into effect this year. However, if they did get that number of signatures, it would go on the ballot. If the tax was upheld and the majority of voters voted for us to increase our property tax, it would not go into effect until twenty-twenty. So we'd be one year trying to figure out what to do, depending on what Lone Peak passes as a budget.
So it would be in July of twenty-twenty?
Uh, so property tax is billed, what, in December, right? So we wouldn't get the money until January of twenty-twenty-one, but it would be for the twenty-twenty-one budget.
Gotcha.
If the, if the property tax was rejected, we would automatically just go back to our previous year's certified tax rate and stay there. And if council wanted to try again next year, we'd have to go through the same truth and taxation process.
So would we, now this goes back to Tim Merrill, if Lone Peak Public Safety passes the budget in June, are we, and it goes to referendum, it doesn't pass, we've passed that budget, I guess we could go as a board and have to change all that?
Well, the, the budget passed by the board, I'm gonna have to think, it wouldn't be preferable.
But we'd still be obligated for that.
But we'll just be obligated for it.
So we'd have to find the revenue somewhere else? Like you have to pull it out of the, the reserve or something?
Reserves or cut other areas, yes.
Okay.
Yes. To catch twenty-two, it's hard.
So I assume you're gonna present the fee idea next, okay?
There is also the ability to create a fee. What that would mean at this point would be fifteen dollars and sixty-six cents per month per home. That would be added to our utility bills, just like we have with our transportation fee. It's uniform and application, so every home pays that. It also includes tax exempt, like churches, schools, things like that would also be paying towards this public safety fee. This isn't, fees are not tax deductible. The state auditor has indicated to us that all fee, not us Highland City, us municipalities in general, that all fees should be tied directly to use. I'll be honest, it, it makes me nervous to have a public safety fee because I can't tie it to use. Like a use fee, like I can say, you used my, the pavilion, and so because of that, it's twenty-five dollars. Or, or our pressurized irrigation, or any of our utility fees, we calculate based on usage, where we can't do that for a public safety fee. Timeline there, it would, we would recommend that when you adopt the final budget, you would also adopt this fee. Unfortunately, one of the changes in state law means that if it were referred after council adopted, it can't go on the ballot until twenty-twenty. They set a line of April fifteenth, any items that are referred after that date have to go on the following election year. So we would have to wait a whole year to really find out. The only caveat to that is if they, if signature, enough signatures were not gathered to qualify for the ballot, we could put the fee into effect in October of this year. But if it does qualify for the ballot, we're off at least until December of twenty-twenty, depending on whether it's upheld or not. So like we did with the road, the road show, as we lovingly call it, we would do similar outreach efforts. Should council want to pursue a revenue increase option, we would do a very similar campaign, except it would be very accelerated because we are starting in April. Stakeholder meetings with people who we feel like can be rallies in our community and who have a really big leadership role in our community. Open houses, newsletter, website, social media. Like I did say, this is a very restricted timeline, being council has to pass something by June eighteenth if you want, it has to pass a budget by June eighteenth. So we have a very constricted timeline, especially with a fee. Property tax, we do have a little bit longer because you don't really make the final determination until August, but either way, we are still short on time, but it is doable. Overall, I guess this is, uh, the picture that we want to paint, council, I guess, before I move away, any questions about fee or revenue option?
Have you looked, maybe doing a combination?
I have not. We have not at all.
I think it would be confusing to the public. I wouldn't be in favor of it just for that, simple, simple, simple.
Well, you know, when I was on the council before and we tried to raise property taxes for the roads, and at that time, property tax was pretty deductible. It's not now with the changes in the federal tax code. I mean, because you only get ten thousand dollars between your state tax and, and your property tax, so a lot of it really isn't deductible. But the problem is, when you say a forty-nine percent increase in, in your city property tax, that gets spun real quick.
Absolutely.
And, and it's really not that much of your total property tax. I mean, since that time, the school districts raised it much more than that. But I, I just think to present it to people, I think we need to find a way, if we really need to do this, and I personally think some of it needs to come out of the reserves, but I think we need to have it in such a way that people understand that.
Scott, taking out reserves is one-time money. It doesn't buy you anything the next year.
I know, but I think you could lower the amount, and I understand the arguments in both ways, but I'm not sure we need a twenty-five percent or a twenty percent reserve all the time. If we're gonna raise taxes on people, it's kind of hard to explain to people, yeah, but we've got all this reserve, but we're gonna raise your taxes for this because we want to keep a reserve. And that makes sense, too, but again, you've got to explain this to people. Because it's really easy to refer this for referendums if people can take a figure and spin it. Because I saw that before.
Absolutely.
So I, I just think we need to kind of, we've got to be real explicit on what we're explaining, whatever we choose. I personally think there's maybe a middle ground and, and do a kind of combination things. I, I don't know. I mean, there's a lot of discussions on it, but-
Absolutely, and I, you know, chiefs are, you know, talking and working on their budgets, I know, and maybe, you know, trying to find if there is middle ground, at least from a cut perspective, right? But you're absolutely right, Scott, I think that, I'm, I'm scared to say forty-nine percent. I am. And I'm not sure that, given our timeframe, that we're going to get the community trust to move forward with it. We will definitely throw all of our efforts in if that's what the direction council wants us to go, but I, I'm nervous about it.
When you say, you know, a forty-nine percent or fifty percent rounded up, would you rather have a fifty percent increase in your property tax or a fifteen dollar a month public safety fee? Because as you've explained, when people say fifty percent in their property tax, they look at the full amount. They don't look at the city.
They look at the part of the side.
At the city, and even the city part, you know, for those high-end homeowners, it's pretty significant, yeah. So it's, it's a tough one.
We'll have a huge communication job to do, if, whatever way council decides to go.
Can you go back to the slide that showed the fees? I mean, the property tax?
Yep.
Okay, so it would be, for someone with less than a three hundred thousand dollar home, we're talking nine bucks, maybe ten bucks a month. So, so if we had a fee, it would be fifteen?
Correct.
That's pretty close. But for the, for the people who have a million dollars or more home, you're talking twice.
You're doubling it.
Well, one of, one of the key things that we need to be focused on, and this is, this is the communication to residents, is really, what's the level of service? Because the only way to reduce this is to remove certain pieces of service. And so it's not really, I mean, it is a dollar amount, but the dollar amount reflects the service level. So we can either have two ambulance service or we can have one ambulance service. It is really the biggest chunk of money. It's the personnel and it's the cost of the equipment. And so we can either have, you know, a certain level of insurance, or whatever you want to call it, safety, service, insurance. That's what the residents are gonna have to look at and say, this is what it costs. This is, this is not about the eight hundred thousand dollars, it is about what we believe is a service level. And that's what it costs for that service level, and if we don't want that, then we lower it. I mean, that's-
See, and I agree.
We still need to raise it significantly, even to do the, the one-
Yes.
...service.
And I, I should clarify, when I say I'm nervous about doing this, it's not because I don't believe that this isn't needed. From a, from a city perspective, general fund, and in having meetings with the chiefs, I understand why they're asking for it, and I can support, I can support an increase, certainly. It's just overcoming the communication challenges that will lay before us. Staff will certainly do, do our best, and I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that it's impossible. We can certainly do it, and I, I think, I don't think we have a choice, council, to not, to not do anything at this point.
So what are the arguments against the fee, again?
Um, so-
Tim has the best argument. It primarily has to do with tying it to use.
It is. So one of the, for example, I'm, I'm not sure if councils where Pleasant Grove City is being sued over their road fee. And essentially, the argument that is the most strong is the fact, their calculation of tying their road fee to use. It remains to be determined where that ends up in the courts and whose side it is in favor on, but it's, it's an argument that's being pursued right now.
So Senator Stevenson made a big deal.
If you can't tie it to roads, you can't tie it to public safety, that's for sure.
He made the issue that the reason fees are a problem is because in a city council meeting like this with, you know, ten less people in the audience, which is normally what we have, thank you for being here, and even this late, this is awesome. But we could pass a fee and there's no discussion, there's no comments, there's no input. His argument was, you can't do that because it's almost, it's, it's really close to a tax. It's basically the same thing as a tax.
It is a tax.
Unless it's a use, unless it has that direct use. So it costs X amount to move your garbage can, you're paying X amount because that's what it costs to move the garbage can. If it's not specific like that, it's basically a tax. So his argument was, you need to go through the truth and taxation. If we go through these steps, which are identical to what we would be going through in truth and taxation, it shouldn't be any different. Fundamentally, it's the same thing. You can call it a tax, you can call it a fee, you can call it anything you want, but you're giving it, you're giving the residents enough input and enough ability to voice and, and help drive this that it's really the same. And so Stevenson didn't have any issue with fees, and he's the big tax guy. His issue was, you're just trying to get around what we've already put in place, which is really important. And I think the way Utah does property tax and increases, I think it's, it's really good. It's good, better, and best. It's better than all the other states around us, but they should have put an amount in there for inflation increases so that, you know, there's at least some movement in there. But it's another, another discussion, another topic, another day. But to me, if we go through these steps with residents and, and have that same view, we have done everything that any tax would have had as well. And I think that that would be hard, I mean, anybody can sue anybody for anything, but I think it would be hard to justify a, a lawsuit against us when we've done everything equal to a tax increase.
Equal to a, a truth and taxation here.
Yes.
There, there is, I've talked to Roger, too. He's the, the league's-
Utah City of Towns.
ULCT.
Utah League of City and Towns.
Uh, tax attorney, basically. He deals with it. And he said, he's looking forward to this PG suit because there are some legal questions of whether or not by law, whether or not you follow a process by law, you can do this or not. So there is some risk that if, if we go the fee route, that a lawsuit could get filed and rejected. There's no risk on the, on the tax side, but there is some risk on the fee side.
Well, there is risk on the tax side because it could also be referendum.
There's, the-
That's on both sides.
That's on both sides. There's additional risk.
And see, you know, when we did the road fee, there were a number of people in the city that would have strongly fought a property tax increase. They were willing to let the road fee-
Yes.
-slide because it was much more fair.
Right.
There's also been a change in the tax issue. Before, the numbers required that if you passed a- Before, the numbers required that if you passed a tax and it failed, it didn't make it, it could not make it on the referendum for that year. It had to go another year. So, you basically had to change your tax. You had to change your budget. They've changed the timing of it now so that when they do a referral and this goes to vote, it goes to vote in the same year. And so, we're not having to go another year and we don't have to change our budget. We can leave the budget in place.
Well, we still have to, the budget will not come. The new money will not come for another year. But the election would happen that year.
And so, we would have to, for the months that we don't have it.
That's for, but the property tax, you lose, if it gets enough signatures, you lose a year.
Yes. So, yes.
That's true. But you're not losing, you're not losing two years because they could keep doing this every year.
But they changed the law so now that the fee getting referred has the same effect.
Same impact.
If they get enough signatures, you've lost a year.
So, here.
Either way.
I'll have Tim jump in here. From an administrator standpoint, here's my concern with the two. Is I think that the, as Aaron said, traditionally, public safety is funded through property tax. The legislature has done some things that allow cities to overcome the hurdle of where it goes. If a road fee is challenged, if our road fee was challenged per se and we lost, I'm not doing road projects. In this particular instance, if we do a public safety fee and the public safety fee is challenged, not only am I out that revenue, but I'm affecting individuals and employees. It's not, to me, it's, that's a pretty big distinction. And something to think about.
I think, Tim, though, is correct. If I was going to do a marketing job, $15, saying we're doing $15 versus a 49%, hey, that's a good twist. You know, Highland increases property tax 49% versus, hey, it's a $15 fee. I think the concern, though, comes in is that fee, we might have some legality issues, is what we're hearing, Tim. Is that correct, that we could have some legality risk by doing a fee?
Correct. I think the mayor was spot on when he said, it's just how, what's your risk tolerance level? So, we have great citizens in Highland. I don't anticipate them to sue us, but we already have a pending lawsuit in Pleasant Grove. Even if we're not sued, a ruling in the Pleasant Grove case may create some kind of precedent that might spill over and affect our fee here. And so, there is certainly more certainty with the tax and there's more uncertainty with the fee.
So, this begs the question, why with this new streamlined Lone Peak Safety District, why don't we just create a special service district and they can do their own taxing?
We could.
To me, it would seem like that's a better route than to try to have the cities do either fees or property tax or, you know. I think it would be an easier sell. I promise, if we go out and say, we're going to increase your property tax by 49%, they will defeat it. I mean, that has been my experience in the past on the council. Now, unless we can do some amazing communication.
I'll challenge you on that one just a little bit for two things. One, the tolerance for looking at public safety is different than it is for a general fund. So, having, one of the reasons why the property tax or the slash property fee was a discussion is because there was a concern and one of the key elements for a fee was, you can lock that in. We can take the exact amount for a fee and put it over here. When it's property tax, it comes in a lump sum and you have to calculate the percentage out of that and stick it over somewhere else. And so, they were feeling more comfortable that they could trust the city to track it better. With this new law that's passed, we can put it in and it is tracked separately. It's given to us separately. It's a black and white, follow the numbers, the dollars all the way through. So, tracking it and trust is equal to what it was for a fee. The fact that it's public safety, almost anybody is willing to address public safety as a necessary cost than they will a general fund where tomorrow we could change it. And so, as long as we lock it in and it is for public safety, I believe that residents are more likely, more willing to address a public safety fee than, you know, how many snowplows we have. You know, if I have to wait an extra day for a plow, there's a big difference between that and that personal impact. If my house burns down, if a policeman doesn't show up, there's a difference in my opinion. And so, I think that they could refer it. I'm not saying that that wouldn't happen. But I think when it comes down to an election, I don't think that they would. I think it would pass because I think people would look at it and go, I would rather have this level of service and pay that increased fee, even though I don't like it, it's a lot. I would rather do that than not have that level of service.
Are you talking about fees or property tax?
I'm talking about property tax. I'm talking about the.
Because you just shifted to fee.
I'm saying the concept of it is, property tax now has all the elements that the fee had, which is guaranteeing that it's locked into a certain place and that it's going for a specific purpose. We can follow the dollars all the way through and it's going to a specific purpose. That was the primary thing for fee. Wasn't the only thing.
And they're both now not deductible.
Right. Yeah, that's a good point.
So, and the other portion is that it's not evenly distributed throughout the city. And that's a key issue.
It is. Because if you look at $300,000 home at $9 a month versus one that's a million at $30 a month, I mean, there are three times more. I mean, it is a concern when you, you know, when you get in.
Yet if we're a district, it would be the exact same thing.
Well, now, as a district, could the district impose a fee per household as opposed to a property tax? Or must they do a property tax?
So, if, so the district is an inter-local entity.
I know, but if it were a district.
There were a special service district that could tax for itself.
Like UFA or something.
Well, I know they can tax. I'm not aware of.
I know they can do fees also, but I'm not, I think they'd run into the same thing, discussion that we are running into with how public safety is traditionally funded, especially in Utah.
I will say too, so I live in Eagle Mountain. UFA is my fire provider. There's something to be said for local control too, right? So, UFA, you know, increased my property tax bill a couple of years ago and there was no way I was going to go to Draper to their public meeting. You know, I just felt like to voice my concerns, my UFA fire portion of my property tax bill is more than my Eagle Mountain portion. I think there's something that is beneficial about local control. But I do understand that we run into this very difficult issue all of the time of can the cities afford what the district wants to do? Just my two cents there.
But it's kind of the same thing with the school district. I mean, they raise our property taxes almost yearly and you don't really get a lot of say. I mean, you can go to the school board and there are people on the school board that oppose that a lot of times. But we really lose a lot of control that way. You're absolutely right.
The other thing too, with a property tax increase in truth and taxation, that's one meeting. Nobody shows up. There are very few people show up. If we do what we say we're going to do and do some town hall meeting, I think we're doing, we're going above and beyond. And frankly, what we should do.
Yeah.
But we're going to do all that in two months, aren't we?
Yeah.
In theory, if we do a fee, yes, we have to do it all before June 18th as much as we can.
And one of the reasons why people don't protest the school district as much either is because it's your kids. It's the education. It's one of those things.
And they have no idea where that money's really going.
Well, they know it's going toward their children somewhere.
Kids, yes. But, you know.
And so, my point is, is that because it's children and public safety fall into a similar kind of thing of, you know, it's good for us. And that's why I think that there's an advantage here over us asking for this to go into the general fund and then promise that we're going to put it somewhere.
And I guess I feel like we really drill our chiefs in terms of what they're spending their money for. I don't think that goes on at the school district.
Not the rigors.
Sorry.
So, Mayor, I'd love to, I mean, we only have a few people here. I'd love to get.
Some opinion.
I mean, you've now heard a nice dialogue up here, you know. Sherry, I'm sure you've got an opinion in that head of yours.
And Josh, you can have an opinion too.
Love to have you guys come up and.
Give some opinions, yeah.
Tell us what you think. You've heard this stuff. Doug?
Doug, can you turn on your mic?
The light needs to be on. There you go.
I looked down, saw that it was green, but it turns out it wasn't bright green. I'm Doug Courtney. I think that clearly some sort of revenue increase is necessary. I like the property tax for the reasons that Aaron talked about, that it's the normal way of funding public service, that we don't have the legality risk. I think that the big problem that we're going to be facing PR-wise isn't about where the money's going, isn't about that it's 49%. It's that someone is going to come out and say that you're raising my property tax 49% in order to give police officers a 15% raise. And we have to make sure that that's not the story. Because that's not where most of the money is going, I don't think.
Most of it's going to fire.
Right. But if you look at the numbers on what we're doing salary-wise and benefits-wise with the police, that's about what it ends up to. And we have to be really careful to make sure that we head that off and that doesn't get to be the story. Because that's going to kill it.
There's a general lack of trust by the general public as to what public entities do with their money.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, we fall under the, we get the baggage of, you know, what the state does, what the feds do, what the school district does. And frankly, I think the city councils, you know, some are guilty, but I think for the most part, we really do take a look at where that money is spent.
I think especially in Highland, if you look at the history, I mean, yes.
Let me ask you, Doug, you live, you know, so I look at the $300,000 homes in Tuscana. I'm just, you know, that's kind of, I would assume where you live, you're going to possibly be a little bit higher than the average.
I'm right about, right about the average.
Is there a concern? I mean, and I was just looking at myself, okay, we've got some residents, and this is public safety. To me, it seems to be equal. You know, I mean, that they're going to use it probably the same as I might. I don't see, you know, maybe the household size might change or age. If someone says, hey, they're going to pay nine and this other person is paying 30, and I'm, let's get it down. One's paying 108, one's paying 356, does that cause you angst at all? Or are you saying, I'm willing to give that to my brethren?
It doesn't to me because most of the, as has been pointed out, the majority of the increase is going to fire. And if my home is worth twice as much as somebody else, I'm getting twice as much benefit out of that.
How are you getting twice as much benefit?
Well, if they protect my home from burning down, then it saves me twice as much as protecting somebody's home that's worth half as much as mine from burning down.
Well, but you're insured, so.
Hopefully. Go check your insurance. Let me ask you another question. We've talked about the increase. It's a significant amount. The real question is, should we have two ambulance service or one?
I think that it is very much like homeowner's insurance, that someone said that having two things at once is the exception rather than the rule. I pay homeowner's insurance and right now I have a mortgage, so I'm forced to do it. But I have in the past not had a mortgage and still chose to pay homeowner's insurance. And that's exactly the same thing, that it is the exception rather than the rule that I get anything back for that homeowner's insurance. And yet, I'm perfectly willing to pay it all the time. I think having the ability to respond to two concurrent medical events, yes, it is the exception rather than the rule, but it's insurance.
So, you know, we do have an executive session coming up. Can I propose that we just have a cutoff time of like 10 minutes from now so that we can take a five-minute break?
Okay.
Any other?
Doug, anybody else want to come up?
Thank you, Doug.
Well, she's coming up. I, you know, I like the, I pay 10 cents for an apple, you pay 10 cents for a pie. It's all the same. I was thinking the other day and I was, you know, there's this thing called tithing where we all don't pay the same amount.
But it's voluntary.
Yes. But anyway.
There's a big difference.
You volunteered to live here in the US. No, don't go there. I'm just kidding.
So, that gave me pause on the, okay, I'm going to back off.
Just remember, it's voluntary.
Hey, we're taking Sherry's time here.
I'm Sherry Kramer. I just wanted to say a couple of things if you're interested. I think because it's public safety, it will be easier to help the residents to see that it is important. I mean, I want, I want there to be an ambulance. I want there to be a fire truck when I need it. We've used one when we lived in American Fork. And had that been in, had we only had one ambulance in American Fork and that was in use when I needed one as well? I mean, horrible. So, I think it's really important that we have two and I think the residents will see that. When you're trying to get the word out, I think it's, you need to be very clear and not just say 49%. You need to say, our portion is 13% of your total tax and that will basically double. Something, you need to say it that way.
Grow up by 6%, 6, 7%.
50% increase.
What's that?
50% increase on your portion.
Yes. And you need to be very clear what our portion is so that they know that it's only 13%.
Well, but I like what Scott's saying. Instead of being 13% of your property tax, it only might be 18%, you know, as a total of the property tax.
So, just for clarity, we have to explain, we have to state the 50%, right, Aaron?
In the newspaper announcement, we have to, and the announcement that goes out with the tax bill, it says 59, or Highland's portion is a 59% increase.
So, 49. But the point is.
That's the headlines.
It will be, it will be out there. We just have to address it and your statement's spot on. We can't let people get spun up on that. We have to bring them back into reality and say, this is what that means.
Yes.
And so, we can, we can go over and over. We have to make that really clear. But we don't have the ability to not make that statement. We by law have to make that statement. So, it'll be out there and people will spin up because they'll freak out because the first thing that everybody thinks of is, my property tax of 2,000 or 3,000 just went up 50% and they see it as the whole amount, not just our portion.
Yes.
That will immediately happen for a big chunk of people.
Okay, well, if you have to put that out there, which you should, then you need to just explain that it's on the 13%, not the entire. And I like that it can be specifically put towards public safety and not go into the general fund. That's huge, I think, for the residents to know that. And if you get the word out on that, that's going to be critical because people don't want it just going into the general fund because then they don't know from council to council where that money will go. And that's.
The trust issue again, right?
Yeah.
So, you're saying that'd be a dedicated tax to?
I would, I would, yeah, I would do that.
Some.
Anybody else?
Just while this is coming up, something for council to think about. So, we're just talking about public safety and there's this other general fund study that says if we don't do something besides this public safety by 2022, we'll be negative. So, it probably shouldn't just be the public safety that we talk, in the end, that we talk about.
Right. And Rod Martin, I'm an American Fork resident, I just want to put my two cents in my experience in American Fork. Tried to put a $20 million bond through for roads, American Fork Citizens League or whatever they call themselves. It's a 60% increase in taxes and stuff like that and rallied the troops and shot it down in flames. From what I've seen in the, just the time I'm here, you don't have the luxury to wait. Highland City does not have the luxury. You don't have the money. You don't have the resources to wait and have it get put off any longer. It being a public, a public safety fee, there are, you know, potential issues, legalities and things like that. You've got to pick the thing that's most likely to succeed because you can't fund that bill for very long at all. And if it gets shot down, where are you going to find it? And so, that's where you need to put your efforts into what's most likely, the way you're going to be able to get that money and what's going to be palatable for the residents. You've already had all the discussions and it's great. And if there was only easy answers, our life would be so much easier.
If it was easy answers, you'd run for office? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. And if I had thicker skin.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Mayor, so to kind of give an, oh, excuse me. No, you're first, Josh. Go right ahead.
Well, so, as I'm sitting here thinking about all of this and my thought is, no matter what you decide, there needs to be public education specifically about, you know, residents, if you would like your taxes to be lower, if you would like these fees to be lower, then you. then you need to do more of your shopping here in Highland. And, you know, how many people go to Smiths or go to Lehigh or go to American Fork to do all the shopping that they could do here? And how much is that costing him, them now on these fees because they are bypassing those funds that could be going right to the city? And I think an education needs to be had amongst the residents saying, you know, if you, if you were to do business here in Highland, then these taxes wouldn't be as serious as they are. And that's, I think that needs to go along with the public education of whatever you decide.
Thank you.
That's a good point.
Erin?
Mayor, council, next steps. As we discussed earlier, we are on a compressed timeframe, timeframe here. So we, we, we would recommend over the next couple of weeks that you meet with members of staff, Nathan, Gary, and the chiefs to fully understand their budgets and so that on April twenty-fifth during our next work session, we can get some very clear direction from council, what way you are leaning. We have-
That's nine days.
Yes, it, again, compressed timeframe. We have a budget open house scheduled for May second, so, which is a week after our work session and I need to know what I'm telling residents at that open house in terms of fee revenue or fee or property tax increase. So that's why we really need the communication there. On the, then the next council meeting, May twenty-first, well, a tentative budget will come before you to be adopted. Depending on if, if, if you are supportive of doing a fee or tax increase, we would potentially have more open houses in May to try and get the word out, which way council's leaning. And then on June eighteenth, budget would be passed and potentially a truth and taxation date set. So that's where we're looking and I know it's a lot in the next little bit, but I want to make sure you, you're aware of, that we need a decision quick on this.
So one question I'd like to make, so we have representation on the Lone Peak Safety Board from our council. And I, I think it'd be great if those members that are on that could help kind of justify these cost increases to the rest of the council. And if they're-
Would love to.
-supportive and, and so I, I just want to know if you're supportive, if you believe they're consistent with what needs to be done and, and what you're, so on the police board, is it the mayor and Brian? And on the fire, who's still on the fire, is that right, him or?
On, on fire. Fire.
Okay, so the two of you are on police, okay.
Yeah, but I vote anyway, doesn't count, but I-
Well, I used to vote on the fire too.
Brian's a very important part of that board.
So my, real quick, my thoughts on it are, I, they've been vetted pretty thoroughly. I am not an expert on the fireside. I think there might be a way to cut a little bit more out of the fire, I don't know what that would be. But I, I think the level of service that they're asking or suggesting we provide is, is basically what we're currently getting, so I, I support, I support that. And if, if we go that route, I'll, I'll be very supportive of it. I, I won't be hesitant. I, I don't think there's, if you go to the, the, the one fire, the one ambulance thing, I just, I don't see that cutting it by less than the third or just cutting it by a quarter. I just, I don't, I don't think it's going to matter much if people say, I'll, I'll do a twelve dollar versus a fifteen dollar tax increase or fee increase or whatever mechanism we use. What I have a little bit more concern about is the out years on the, like on the full fire, do we really need a marshal? I, I would, I would, I will be pushing back harder on those things. We're, we've pushed back quite hard and I think have gotten pretty good responses from the chiefs on, on what they're asking for, it's reasonable. If there are cuts that can be made that are not that significant, that I can, I, I can't see a, a huge cut by saying, let's sharpen our pencil. Some things could come down, but it won't be significant. So if we want the level of service and I, and I, my, my, I, I know there are people on Highland that don't want that level of service, that they're content with a rural level of service. There are people that were content to have the roads go to dust, right?
Right. We heard from them.
But, yeah, we, well, we did and, but I think once we explained it to people, it was an easier sell. My concern here is the compressed timeframe. So I'm supportive of this. And things can maybe be sharpened, but, and we'll continue to ask to have them sharpened, but I don't see them coming down dramatically. Maybe it comes down a hundred thousand dollars. I think if we could sell the idea of, well, let's behave like a taxing district and allocate costs by property, using a property tax model between Highland and AF or Alpine, then there is some benefit to us on that. I didn't know that when I started exploring it, but it's what it comes out to be. I think that's a very, that's the ten minutes. Anyway, that's, so I think there are areas to look at on the agreement and-
Do you need some help with your phone there?
It's an Android, I, I'm sorry, it's not an Apple.
I could throw it on the ground just as easy as any other phone.
So Scott, looking at your public safety, for me, when I look at the fire and we can get in, you know, we can talk about, is, right now, the fire has eight staff.
We want to be careful about saying too much about that in a public meeting quite yet until we're certain.
A, a certain about?
With Chief Thompson, thank you, not being here and we want him to have the chance to fully vet that with his employees before.
So Scott, one thing, residents don't, don't know this, we had a safer grant. Basically, as a community, we had this many fire or paramedics, it went to here because we were given a boatload of money. And we didn't have to pay for any of that. Over time, it slowly went away and we started covering the costs. We didn't increase any taxes. We had some additional funds in the city, we had some things happening in the city and we sucked all of those resources out, we cut all the different departments, we pulled money out of the roads, that's why we had to start paying this fee, because we sucked it out of every other piece in the organization. And frankly, we weren't keeping even with what the fire department needed during that timeframe as well. So they stayed level, we increased the fees just to cover this, but they should have been increasing in cost during that same time. We've now hit the wall. And as I've looked through this, we either cut service or we increase the funds. And we're going to have to increase the funds no matter what, it's really about, do we cut the service and increase a smaller amount of funds or do we keep the service that we believe should be there, which I believe should be two ambulances? I believe there needs to be a backup. If we have one ambulance and it goes to Salt Lake, to- Primary Children's Hospital, we have nothing here. Now, that doesn't mean that we won't get any service, we can call Alpine or we can, not Alpine, yeah, that'd be nice. We can call American Fork and we can call Lehigh, but we now have to wait for their ambulance to show up as long as it's not being used. And if it's being used, then we have to reach out to Provo and Orem and Linden and wherever else, Saratoga Springs, we can go out to Eagle Mountain. To me, having that backup, it's not going to be used that much, I hope, but we've got thirty thousand people, it's Alpine and Highland. To me, that's really the issue is, do you want it to raise a little bit or do you want to raise it a little bit more and keep the service? I believe that the numbers that Chief Thompson is bringing forward is what, if anybody looked at it from an engineering standpoint would say, yes, we need those things. Our air packs expire. And it's not just the expiration, but the equipment that fill those air packs don't connect to the new systems that are out there. So we can't even fill them up, we can't even use them over time because the adapters don't work anymore. I mean, there are physical changes that are going on, we have equipment that has to be replaced. Our costs for maintaining it are getting to the point where it's costing as much or more to maintain it as it would be to buy a brand new one. Those are, those are the kinds of things that we're dealing with and it's, there just isn't the fluff in there to be able to just say, we're not going to eat it or we're not going to do it, we're just, you know, we're just going to move forward with what we have.
And I agree with it. I, I guess what I'm thinking more about is whether some of this can be done incrementally, whether things can be done as a mix. My, my concern is, is to do this, I, I think you have to be able to justify to people and, and make sure that you've done everything you can to keep things as inexpensive as possible. Now, I, I certainly, as a physician, feel like we need the best paramedic services or at least as, as much as we can afford. But at the same time, you know, I, I think there's a big problem going out and saying, we're going to increase your property taxes by forty-nine percent. And we have experience to say that was a problem. So I think we have to be very, very careful how we do this, I think we need to look at and just have a very good discussion with our citizens. I'm not opposed to increasing revenue, I think we do amazing on nine million dollars a year, basically. But, you know, I just, how are we going to do it? Because if it's all defeated, we've accomplished nothing.
Absolutely.
I think that's, you know, I agree with Scott and, and with Brian. We have, I think, two very, very good chiefs who have, who have done very well. The problem is not really us, I think we're convinced.
Right.
And, and what I would put out there is if, if we put a fee out there or if we put a, a property tax increase out there and it is refunded and it is rejected, that's going to put a huge burden on both of our chiefs and, because we're not going to be able to afford it. So you just need to be prepared, we'll do our best to, to make it happen, but I agree that I think the chiefs have done a good job. Now, can they, can they tweak it a little bit? Probably, but not significantly, I don't think.
Well, and if it goes what you just described, if it doesn't pass, then we're going to see a significant impact in not only service, but it's going to have a ripple effect because we will lose people that we won't be able to replace-
Right.
-in any time soon, we're going to lose quality people.
It's up to us to do a good job.
It is.
Like we did on Mount Ridge Park.
Ouch. All right, all right, let's move on. I think we've beat this horse.
Ready for motion to move into executive session? With a five-minute bio break.
I move that we move to executive session to discuss property or people or-
I'll second it.
Whatever that third thing.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
All right, what, those three categories-
Aye.
Litigation, that's the third one.
We have one aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.